Welcome to our first council meeting to put out for consultation the annual plan on the 28th of February and I will start off with all of us to do a karakia. Please stand up. I'd like to say that we're getting slightly bit through at that.
I didn't have to start it.
Good. Excellent. Apologies, we have received no apologies and look at that, here right on the dot, so that's great. Declarations of interest, there are no declarations of interest recorded but as we go through, if something pops into your head that you think you should bring to our attention, please do. So, I will now start off with a little introduction of what we're going to do today. We now move into the big event, the draft annual plan for consultation. Today, we will consider the proposed draft plan and how we manage ratepayers' money and assets for the next 12 months. I think we can all see this drafted against a tough backdrop. Since we were sworn in, we've been briefed in detail on the choppy waters that we're heading into. Inflation, insurance, interest rates have shot up, the labour market's tightened, supply chains have been a headache and the Reserve Bank is forecasting a recession for later on in the year. In times like this, we must do our bit to take the pressure off people's cost of living. This draft plan started with a projected increase of 14.6% based on the initial budget set in the 2021 long-term plan. Since October, we have been working to get this number down by going through the budget line by line. We have suggested changes to reduce the burden on households while still maintaining the services that our community continue to want. This has led to a draft annual plan with a proposed increase of 5.6% for the 2023/24 financial year. I want to thank everyone for their hard work over Christmas break to get us to this figure. In the middle of 2022, it looked like a 3% or 4% would be possible, but we're now seeing inflation over 7% and in the construction sector it's sitting around 15%. This has put a huge pressure on households, businesses, councils across the country. A recent survey found that 42% of councils are planning for rates increases of 10% or higher and another 28% for planning increases between 5% and 10%, meaning that our increase will be among the lowest in New Zealand. I know we're all committed to doing what we can do to keep rates increases as low as possible for as long as possible. Today, we decide what we want to suggest to our customers, our community. A big part of that is listening to what people have to say. This is their money, so we need them to give us a steer on how to go forward. After consultation, the public feedback will help us refine and agree the final annual plan for 2023/24 by the end of June this year. So let's get proceedings underway. Dawn, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is probably just to reinforce some of the points that the mayor has made. And for our new members, welcome to the process of the annual plan. It can sometimes be seen as a dark art, but I hope you find today both enjoyable and actually we get to some conclusions. So every three years, we prepare a long-term plan and our last long-term plan covered the period from 2021 to 2031. In the years between the LTP, we have to develop an annual plan and we do that every year. And the purpose of that is to be transparent about the actual changes in the year coming. And we know each and every one of us that the world has changed quite considerably since 2021. The mayor has mentioned interest rates, inflation, supply issues, a tight labour market and of course, the geopolitical instability that we've seen worldwide. Those global issues have had a bigger than usual impact on New Zealand and on our local economy and have put the city council also under pressure. These are concrete facts that every organisation, family and community is facing in New Zealand today and we know that that is likely to continue for the foreseeable future. Staff and councillors have worked incredibly hard together to keep the proposed rates figure below the 7% inflation rate that we're seeing across New Zealand. And importantly, we've done that without compromising any services and continuing to invest in our city's future, but we know that that is still a challenge. The overall proposed rates increase of 5.58%, because there's been a slight adjustment following finance and performance last week, has been delivered through a mixture of savings and approach and Leah Scales, my Chief Financial Officer, will give a little bit more detail about that shortly. We know each and every one of us in council or sat round the governance table wish to ensure that we have our budgets no bigger than they need to be in order to set the rate. And quite realistically, we don't want to charge residents rates for projects that can't be realistically delivered in this coming year. But this year is also unusual because we've also had to undertake the revaluation of property, which again happens every three years and the last time was in 2019. And the QV figures have significantly increased values across the residential properties in the borough. And to be clear, and I know people don't always believe this, that does not affect the total rates that are collected by the council. Our pie does not increase, it remains the same, but it is the distribution within that has changed or will change. And those new values apply on the 1st of July 2023, which is the date the rates will also commence for the new year. So looking at all those changes, both globally and locally, it has been a trickier balancing act than, I'm not sure what normal is at the moment, but normally. But finding that balance is the work that we have done collectively together. And I want to thank each and every elected member and the mayor and staff from across the organisation, because you will see staff present today, they are the vanguard but that everybody is involved in setting the budget and for the hard work of getting us to this point. But there's just one little reminder. Today's not about adopting the budget. You're not deciding the rates today, you're actually hopefully deciding on the consultation documents that will go out to the public. And if you could please keep that in the forefront of your minds, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. We're now going to item three now, this is just putting the draft annual plan on the table. I'll invite councillor McClellan, Deputy Chair of Audit and Risk Management Committee, to provide a very detailed update on the committee's recommendations. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you. I'm happy to introduce the recommendation from Audit and Risk Management Committee. Kim Wallace, who is our independent chair, would normally do so, but she's unavailable today. As everyone here will know, Audit and Risk is a very process committee, we focus on the process and I can confirm that indeed we are happy that the process has been sound, robust and that the committee is more than satisfied to sign off the annual plan.
Thank you, Jake. I will now note that Audit and Risk Management Committee Recommendation 1, which is up on the screen. Okay.
And I'm happy to move it and councillor Scandor is happy to second.
You got that, Sam? Yep. Okay, so we'll do... Yeah, but we got quick, no, there's no questions. Any questions? No, I don't think so. So we'll just get into it. Any debate? I'd like to move it, well, move it then, put the motion, all those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you very much. So now, I'll invite the council officers to present the annual plan report and a presentation regarding excess water charge. Thank you, Leah. Good to see you.
Good morning, Iran. Fundamentally today, just before we start talking about excess water, I do think fundamentally we're talking, we call it annual plan, but it is our budget. So I do think it's appropriate, as you see a photo, to give you, set your scene a bit about the process and everything we've gone through. So I just want to take a few minutes and just to reiterate what we have been grappling with. So today, we are asking you to adopt our draft annual budget for FY24, but this budget was actually set and adopted in June 21 as part of our long-term plan and this is year three of that plan. Today, we are asking you to consider changes to our FY24 budget that recognise the impact of things outside our control over the last two years when we set the budget and there have been a lot of changes to the environment we work in. As an example, in its May 2021 monetary policy statement, the Reserve Bank had left the OCR at 0.25%. In their commentary, they said, "The committee noted that underlying CPI inflation currently remains slightly below their target midpoint of 2% per annum. A range of domestic and international factors are expected to lift headline inflation above 2% for a period." Members noted that factors are expected to be temporary and include higher international transport costs, disruptions to global material supplies and resulting higher prices for many commodities and administration charges. Now, as we know, things went temporary. And in its latest update on the 22nd of February 2023, the Reserve Bank increased the OCR to 4.75%, a 50% point increase. And at this time, the commentary was a little bit more somber. The committee agreed that the OCR still needs to increase, as indicated in the November statement, to ensure inflation returns to within its target range over the medium term. While there are early signs of price pressure easing, core consumer price inflation remains too high, employment is still beyond its maximum sustainable level and near-term inflation expectations remain elevated. Two years, and that's the change of the landscape that we've been in. The forecast still looks to peak in May 23 at 5.5% and expected to remain over the next 12 months, similar timeframe to what we're looking at today. So while it's very easy to be wise in hindsight, why is this commentary so important to us? Because not only does rising interest rates, rising inflation, high labour demand and disruptions to our supply chain impact us as we grapple to manage our rising costs whilst still delivering what we agreed in our LTP, it also impacts what our residents can afford to pay in rates increases, something that the Local Government Act requires us to consider when we set our budget. The budget before you still maintains our priorities and our levels of service as set in our LTP in June 21, but it does recognise the impacts of changes on our operating business that have occurred in the last two years. The council team, including councillors, have worked hard over the last five months to reduce the rates increase position from a starting point of 14.6 back in October. We have recognised that with the impact of supply chain, labour shortage and rising inflation, that our capital programme could not be delivered as expected in the LTP. It does not mean the projects are lost or removed, but deferred to ensure we can deliver on what we promise and we don't need to charge our residents for the costs until we can deliver it. But that wasn't enough and so we've done more to reduce the operational costs, looking at cost to determine whether we increase by inflation or take a temporary or permanent savings approach. This has all been balanced to recognise the impact on our residents. But what we haven't done, we haven't reduced our levels of service, we haven't compromised our core services by not funding renewals of our three-water assets, even though they are expected to leave council ownership in June 24. We have taken a considered approach because that is the right thing to do for our residents. Because if we don't, this will cost our residents more in the long run. It does mean we've had to make some tough calls around what projects get deferred in our capital programme and these decisions have been based on where a project is in the life cycle, deferring those things that can be stopped without incurring further costs, what type of resources are required, balancing whether resources require a best scent to deliver in the most effective and efficient way and what projects have been funded either partially or fully externally with set timeframes to deliver. Adding more budget won't help, we cannot just hire more staff. The marketplace, in this marketplace, they're just not there. Our proposals are based on what is right for the city as a whole, the most efficient approach and not the impact on individual suburbs. The above has got us down to around the 7% to 8% mark in line with overall inflation, but recognising the impact of our residents, the fact that this year we also had to do our three-year revaluation cycle that impacts the proportion of rates paid across suburbs and the fact that we have an LTP next year, we have proposed some one-off adjustments to help this burden. These one-off impacts changes do not impact our services, but they do reduce our proposed rates increase by about 2%. We've achieved a lot in the last five months since we grappled with a 14.6% rates increase and I ask you to remember these considerations as you debate your projects and changes today and consider the impact of those changes on all our residents. That's that.
Thank you, Leah. And is... Yeah, so Tim going to talk about that, oh, we'll do the questions for both of them at the same time. So do they want to do the excess water supply target rate, please?
Yeah, so the reason we're just doing this... Yeah. So the reason we're just doing this briefing today outside, as you'll go through the day, we'll look at some amendments. But last week in councillor briefing, we did this presentation and we all agreed that it was actually really important for the public to see this. So I'm going to, so I apologise if some of you have already seen this, but the public haven't. So I think it's quite important for us just to take the time because there is a proposed amendment on the table today to change the excess water. So just a bit of background, the excess water targeted rate was introduced in the LTP in June 21. That followed consultations in FY20 and 21 and the LTP. We also received feedback in the 2223 annual plan. A deferral of the start date to July 22 was agreed to allow for more increased education and time to determine and update our system requirements to enable the billing. A further deferral to the start of October 22 was agreed in the annual plan FY23 in June 22 to allow further education and communication with our residents. The consultation on the excess water targeted rate, the updated annual plan for 2021, we had 885 submissions received and 460 supported them. In the LTP, 403 submissions were received and of 206 supported, 130 opposed. And in the annual plan, we didn't actually consult on it because it was already agreed, but we did receive nine submissions on it. LTP decision in June 21 was that the council support the introduction of the excess water charge for households that use significantly more water than average to help us better manage demand, particularly during the summer months. The proposed excess water charge would apply to any household that uses on average more than 700 litres per day during a three-month period. And going through, I'm not going to go in detail, but again, the reason it was delayed, the implementation a year was to actually allow people to actually get the data so they can actually change behaviours. Communications we have done since then, communications supporting invoices going out, newslines, social media, Q and A's published to newsline, ongoing digital marketing campaign directing people to the Water Reporter, updates to Water Reporter webpages and brochures, including with invoices with information on remissions, leaks and water use. Public education, we have run and continue to do so, an extensive campaign to educate residents about water charges, checking and reducing use and finding and fixing leaks. This has been included, dedicated online Water Reporter, 27,000 litres to residents with high water use, targeted ads, print ads. And as a result, 464,000 plus visits to the Water Reporter, including 390,000 unique page views. People know that's there, which is great. Just a reminder, this is where our usage is. And the reminder of this is that there's a small proportion of people who are putting the pressure on our water supply network. 79% of households are using 47% of the water and as such will not get an invoice. 21% are using 53% of the water, they will get an invoice, but say 1,400 litres and around the $85 for a quarter. The top 4% of the residents are using a whopping 23% of the water. Now, either a leak is happening or simply they are just using a lot of water with extensive irrigation systems usually the main cause. But what is happening is it's working. The campaign is working. People are thinking about how they use water, which is fantastic. Millions of litres of water have been used. And we've heard from many residents who have found and fixed leaks that did not only help us with the water pressure, but it also helps in some cases the damage to their properties when leaks are found within their properties. Residents are changing the way they use water, which is fantastic. And the data backs that up. So you can see from 22, the data for 22 is reducing from that 21. But fixing leaks is great, absolutely fundamental, but it isn't enough. As a district, we need to reduce our summer water use to take pressure off our network. And this is why we are focused on leak detection and outdoor water use. Without this demand management, we would need to continue to at least do another 11 additional groundwater wells and associated new pump stations by 2031. We've projected the introduction of the rate and the associated reduction on peak use could result in an estimated 17 million in capital expenditure being deferred in the next 10 years. These, a couple of these slides are sort of just to make sure the public actually understand this. It doesn't cost us more to actually collect this data than it does to charge. So this is your FY23 total budget. Now, this is both commercial and residential. We've always charged for commercial, but we are now doing residential and the total revenue associated with that. Another one that I wanted to talk through very quickly and be very clear is the concern in the public in regards to the equity in regards to shared metres. There has been concern that, you know, we are not charging people in multi-use units. But here's the facts for you. So in the first billing period, so you'll be aware, we are just doing our first billing period, of the 25,000 properties that have a shared water metre, only 194 of them would be eligible to receive an invoice if we were charging them. And that is based on the fact that they just, which we've always foreseen, is that they just don't use the same amount of water. Now, of those 194, they are the ones that we will target and look at and establish that whether there's leaks or they will be the first ones we start looking at putting in metres. But on average, the median use for shared connections is 295 litres per household, a lot lower than the per day average. There is still some properties that don't have metres in certain areas, especially Littleton and Diamond Harbour and the Banks Peninsula Settlement, but they do have a restricted supply. And these are the areas that we will look at. But, you know, very little compared as a proportion. So there's 5.7% of all our properties. We read them all, all metres quarterly, including shared connections, so we are seeing those uses. In winter, there are 17,000 properties over the 700 litres a day, and some of this number grows to about 31,000. Now, these numbers I'm showing here are the ones that we've continuously shown in the last year. What is key here is, again, how many people are doing it. But what is key is the next line. Because this is your first stats of actual billing. The bills started going out and are in the mail as we speak. So in January 23, the bills processed, there was 19,000 below the minimum, so that didn't get a bill because they were under the daily limit. There was 16,000 of them. So invoices greater than the daily limit was essentially 4,000, which is around that 20%, which is exactly where we sort of, we've always predicted. The average invoice is about $78, the median is 62. The highest is 440. Now, this is both residential and commercial, okay, so it's not just residential. And the lowest is 23, which is why it says 23 when a minimum for residential is around the 25, okay? So that's a commercial invoice. Now, there are, what we have done is we have stopped any invoices at the moment to review anything going over that's over 450. So we can review it to make sure there's, and talk to the residents. We will compare, look at their data, these are individual invoices that we have stopped without just sending. So we can review them. We will look at their past usage. And if, you know, if there's a blip or something, we will contact them. So we are not just sending bills, we are actually taking a considered effort to actually go, these don't look normal. We will look at their past history. Okay? Rates remission. We do have a rates remission policy. We recognise that there are some families for different reasons that are impacted. And so you can request a remission and they will be considered. Most reasons are for personal medical reasons or you do have a large family members living in the residence, and we will consider those. And as we said, from an operational point of view, while we can, while the rate is set at 700 litres per day, from an operational point of view, we are not sending a bill unless you are actually over that $25 for residential, simply because the fact that it just becomes uneconomical. But that's an operational matter that we have considered. The rate is at from 700. And if you are over the 900 or over the $25, you will get a bill from 700 litres a day. So we have a proposed amendment on the table. What, just to be clear, what we can't do, we can't stop billing in the current year. We are already billing and we can't change the rate for the current year. So any decision that is made today to change the rate for next year, if it does go through, the current year status and invoices are still payable, still chargeable because the rate was set last year. We can't consult in the drafting to remove the excess water charge in FY24. That is a special concerted procedure. It was a targeted, it was a rate that was set as the LTP, so it needs to have a separate process. The proposed amendment on the table is to increase the daily allowance for excess water charging for residential to 900 litres per day from the first of July 23. So as I've explained a lot of this, we currently charge from 700, but usually the $25 limit doesn't hit until 900. Whilst we can consult with the residents in our annual plan to move the charging rate, we cannot change, charge the rate so soon that it ends up changing the concept of the rate. But you cannot do this for the current year. This has to be impacted for next year. This will impact rates increases depending on how you move the rate. This will in effect shift the burden of excess water use onto all ratepayers. It will increase your general rate and will lessen the impact of changing behaviour. Some people will not change behaviour until they actually receive a bill. Financial impact of the proposed amendment is moving to a 900, so it will have a 0.1% rates increase. Now, this doesn't take into account if we do put an operational adjustment to it. So we say, look, we're not going to invoice under 25 or 20 or 15, so it will be more costs. So we'll just, we haven't worked through that yet. But we would likely reduce it from 25 down a bit lower, I would imagine, to have less of an impact. And the staff recommendation is that we do not recommend changing the excess water targeted rate limit. It's been consulted on two times already with majority of support. We have commenced billing in line with previous council decision and any indication the charge is changing will impact on our ability to recover this debt. Then equity that has been discussed around shares metres is not accurate with only 194 properties actually being in excess. And when the 700 litre limit was agreed, it was based on the fact that the average Christchurch household uses 540 litres per day, which is the highest household water use of all largest cities in New Zealand. Increase in the limit will move the rates charged from excess users to all ratepayers. And that's it. Now, in the public documents, there is a lot of examples of customers on the Water Reporter, but I'm not going to go through them, but both yourself and the public can see those. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Leah. That was very good. Now, have we got any specific questions on what Leah has just talked about water? Don't worry about the annual plan stuff, we'll go back to that because this is quite an important thing. So we've got Yanni and then Tim.
One of the concerns that's been raised is that it's unfair to only charge people with metres when other people don't have metres who aren't being charged. Have we done a Bill of Rights assessment or a Human Rights Assessment around the fairness of what we're doing? Like, how do we justify the fact that, like, people in Littleton, for example, wouldn't be charged?
Answer to your question, no, we haven't done a Human Rights Assessment on it. But we're saying it's 5.4% of the all properties that don't have a metre. Some of them include vacant land, so it's not just all properties and households. That includes other things as well.
Is there any, what I'm trying to understand, I guess, is there any principle in law or in the Local Government Act that would mean that it would be inherently unjust to only charge people because they had metres and not charge people because they didn't have metres?
The only comment I would make, councillor Johansson, is that the decision today is not to remove the excess water charge. You actually already agreed to that. So whether the daily limit is 700, as it currently is, or 900, which is what the proposed amendment is, that equity that you are talking about would still be there. So we can't change that.
Other question I had was in terms of people being able to, like, the Water Reporter is great. So it's a really good tool for people. In terms of people understanding what the trends are over time, is everyone now able to look at the annual trend in terms of their water use? So they understand what the impact will be on, like, future billing?
We haven't forecasted that for individual properties, no.
We haven't forecasted, but they will be able to look at the history. We've been, we've been putting in the Water Reader Reporter has how many, 18 months of data?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Yanni. That's cool. Tim?
Thank you. Just two quick questions, Your Honour. First, to the mover, you're proposing just for the residential properties. Oh, sorry. Well, then the first question, the daily limit, if it was charged from 700 litres, which is agreed already to 900, that would then remove the rates remission requirement or the process with residential? Would that be correct? Or that could be a possibility? There wouldn't be need for any of that at all?
It would lessen the impact of that, but it wouldn't remove it totally.
But we could, for instance, that could be part of a discussion if it went further?
I think you're always going to have to have a rates remission policy because there's always going to be exceptions, especially medical reasons.
Yep.
And so I would, would strongly recommend that you don't remove any rates remission. I mean, they get assessed on a fair, equitable way. And like, you know, the remission policy is there for a reason.
Cool. Thank you.
Victoria?
Thank you. My question is about the equity issue, but not in relation to the shared metres, Leah. It's whether we have any old infrastructure. Some people say, yeah, but I've got an old water metre reader, so it's not compatible with our current technology. Have we got an issue? And do we have any figures on how many old metres are out there that for people who aren't being read or receiving bills? And then what the plan is to upgrade those to new, modern technology?
Yes, so over the last two or three months, we have replaced around 1,200 of the very old metres. So they have been done and we'll keep an eye on the ones using a whole heap of water and look to replace those over time as well.
However, just to add, if my memory serves me correctly, Tim, in briefings, haven't we also been clear that actually the older metres would probably, might be reading just slightly under, they wouldn't be overcharging people?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah. And we've got lots of good data on that over the years.
That's helpful. Thank you. I just wanted to touch on it in the public briefing.
Cool. Tyler?
Yes, he's got his time.
I just wanted to just track back to a question on slide 20 is around, if we go up to 900 litres, would the burden be placed upon other ratepayers that are historically working within that 700 litre mark?
Yes, absolutely. Because what you're doing is you're increasing your general rate, the rates increase will increase. So everyone gets on a CV rate, obviously.
So essentially, those that are doing really good are still paying for ones that are using excess water?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, that's my only question.
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr Chair. If the rate was, the trigger rate, shall we call it, was moved up to 900, would then, would people then be allowed to use 1,100 before they got a bill?
No, that will be an operational decision that we will have to make. The only reason we allow that is not to give people more access. There's always a balance between how much it actually costs us to run an invoice.
I mean, I would assume that you would retain that because at $25, it's not, it's not viable to send an invoice for that amount.
Yeah, but what we will need to do is assess how many are in that. So it's not per invoice so much, it's going how many people are in that. So what is the lost revenue if we didn't charge anything? And I don't think it will be $25 an hour, an invoice, it will be less. So that's why I haven't given you the data of what that number will be. Because we'll have to assess, because a lot of people are actually in that, you know, 700 to 900, you know, or they're going to build it to 1,100, right? So we'll need to assess the impact of that and determine what we actually invoice it. But that will be an operational matter. It's not driven by the targeted rate.
Okay, so therefore I can't understand how it's going to change anything if people don't get billed under 900 now, really?
They do, because if you are, if you're 901, right?
You get charged from 700.
You get charged from 1,100. That's the key.
So if at 900, that's getting up to double the average allowance that people consume. And you feel that that wouldn't actually encourage the, or show the savings that we've seen so far, the 10%?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Erin?
Yeah, two questions. One is, using the term burden, it could be a little misleading because if someone's already paid 20 times more than another house for their share of the delivery of their 720 litres, it's not very accurate to say that now, if they use an extra 100 litres a day, that that passing the burden on to someone else, they're already carrying the burden of the, because of the way we rate. They're already carrying the lion's share of the rates bill for water anyway.
Yep. The only thing that you're, you're assuming there is that all excess water users are in the higher CV areas.
I didn't assume anything.
No, I'm just saying, but, yeah, but what I'm saying, yeah, I agree. So you're right. But... But excess water users are across the city, so someone that is paying lesser general rate because their CV is lower could also be paying, could be also an excess water user. So I'm just saying, you know, there is, could be a burden. It's not always the higher CV areas that are paying the excess water charges.
Yeah, yeah, but just assuming that someone's, I mean, saying that there's a burden being passed by those people, I think is quite misleading when they've already paid 20 times more for. I mean, we don't do that with any other service delivery. I mean, power and petrol and bread is the same for everyone, but, oh, yeah, no, tax is very uneven. You're the heart of the work, the more you pay.
And the second question?
The second question is around the one Yanni raised on the human rights issue. Why would we not at least look into that during the coming months before we sign off the annual plan, just in case there's something in it? Rather than waiting a year or whatever and we end up in court and someone actually else is right? Not saying they are, but would we not be wise to at least explore that, to rule it out?
Leah, Leah, do you mind if legal answer that question?
That's what I was going to say.
Thank you. If I can just confirm the advice that I gave last year and the year before that, that this rate would not have been put before you if it wasn't one that was open for the council to be able to make?
Okay.
Okay, so that is confirming there's no chance that what he's raised could be true?
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat that.
Well, you've said for the last three years that what Yanni's raised would not be true because we wouldn't do a rate that couldn't be done. So when people are sending us emails saying that they would take legal action, they couldn't.
They could well take legal action.
Yep.
My advice to this council has consistently been that this is a rate that is open to the council to make and that we are very well placed to defend any legal action that is taken.
Brilliant, thank you. And then finally, the metres themselves, I've received an email this week where someone said, asked about, are they being calibrated? Because theirs was well out and they tested everything and there was no leaks or whatever. The metre was not operating properly, so are they being calibrated?
No, they're not being calibrated. We'd have to look at that specific incident. But we have got really good data on old historic metres that show they do typically underread. But no, they're not calibrated.
But if some, if a particular resident, as we've been very clear on the last two years, if they've got a specific concern, they've done what you've just said, Erin, they've checked it all, that there's no leaks, and they still have a concern, they come to us, we will investigate it and see, send someone out and look at it.
Thank you, Leah. Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Leah. So this is just a really basic question, just so I've got it very clear in my mind. So the 25,000 shared metres across the city, we effectively, we add the units that are on that shared metre together, so to speak, and divide it by the daily limits, in a sense. And we noted that there's 194 that will exceed that, so they're not being billed, are they?
No, because, say you've got one property that's got three units on it, right? There's only one metre for it, so we know if we took the three and we went, so if they're exceeding 21,000, 2,100, right? But we don't know which of those three units is exceeding, so we're not charging, we can't, do you know what I mean? Because it could be the back unit that's doing 2,000 of it and the other two not. So until, but what we would do in that example is we would go out, we'd look at the trend over the last, or the data we've got, and if that shared metre for that property, for those three properties, has been consistently up at that level, then we would actually look into it, make contact with them and actually see if there's potentially leaks. Or we would target, and if we can't see any of that, we would target those properties to actually go on and put metres in, individual metres. So they're the ones we will target because they are excess.
Right, yeah, so at the moment, they're not being charged.
Correct.
So, and the other one, I think it was, Erin's already raised, it was just to clarify for Tyler around the capital value, but it's okay.
Celeste, and just remember, we've got a long way to go today.
Very quick one from me, I'm just curious to know, in terms of soil types, have you noticed that there is some areas that, because of, you know, they might have sandier soils, that has a larger impact on their water usage?
Those areas are using more water, but that's consistent with other areas around town that also have a different soil type. But across the city, last time I looked at the data, there was a pretty even spread.
Thank you, and thank you guys. Now, if we could have the rest of the officers up to talk to us about the annual plan, because otherwise we'd be here till midnight. Thank you. And I'm right behind you.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. Right, to bring it back to the overall annual plan, I'm just going to do a little overview and process look, and I'll try and keep it brief. And then we'll go into some of the specifics of the big levers around how we got to the rates position we are. Of course, we've got Russell Holden, Head of Finance, here with us. We've also got support from the Heads of Service on specific issues if you need that. Right, okay, just to put the whole thing in perspective, annual plans and LTPs are always a triangle between the services and projects we deliver, the cost of those, and the rates number we produce. And we're here to try to get the balance of those three things right. If we only get one corner right and the other's not, then we've done a disservice to our community. So that's the ethos behind how we've built this plan as a team of staff and councillors. The way we did that was a series of briefings over what feels like many months. I think it was starting in October. Some of those briefings were in the public arena before any conclusions had been reached in an effort to be clear and transparent about the thinking and the levers involved. That's a process that we've been doing for a couple of years now, and I think it's worthwhile. There are a number of major levers to how we got here, but Mr Chair, just like a little bit of direction. We've got 10 amendments to consider, some of them are quite substantive in terms of detail. I'm proposing that rather than line by line the report, we talk about the major shifts in levers and field any questions on those, rather than trying to line by line a very extensive report.
John, too. So can you give the overview, Peter, which we're expecting? In terms of the amendments, we've got a process to go through for that, so please don't worry about that.
Understood, understood. Okay, the major levers that got us from 14.6 raw start of all the costs and increases we were facing were the ongoing programme of savings and efficiencies within staff that's managed by the CEO, reducing the capital programme to a deliverable level. And I know that you councillors have heard that rationale ad infinitum, ad nauseam now, but for the benefit of those watching, it was a very strong application of evidence around what we can deliver in terms of the capital projects and programme in this environment. Basically, anybody who's trying to get anything built or run a business knows that just simply planning to do something isn't going to translate into action at the moment. Everybody's looking for skills, everybody's looking for ability to deliver. So we worked hard on the capital programme and brought it down by a significant amount through rephasing rather than cutting to get to a programme of $460 million approximately. That will keep the city moving forward. It will enable us to do the repairs that our residents are asking for and to keep the assets running. Part of that is our intention to hand three waters over in the planned handover by central government in a fit-for-purpose state. We're not cutting that series of activities short, we're not shortchanging them. And the last one was a series of one-off reforms that, I guess, sorry, financial adjustments that are not sustainable over time. That brought us down from 14.6 to about seven and a half, 7.7, and then those one-offs took us down to the current 5.58, 5.6. Now, we can field questions about those in some detail, and I anticipate there's probably some questions around the capital rephasing. If they're part of the amendments, I would propose that they be put on hold until we do that process, rather than overlapping and messing it up.
Yep.
So look, there are also some smaller items, there's some property disposals in there. They're not a financial lever to bring the rates down, they're simply about better use of land and our land portfolio.
And if members have any questions in relation to that, we do have Bruce
Bruce online.
To go on Zoom, and it'll just take us a couple of minutes just to bring him in.
Yep, he's confirmed that he's on standby to answer those questions. And lastly, there are some relatively minor changes to levels of service. They don't change the services our public gets, they're mainly housekeeping and they're mainly driven by external factors around clearer measurement wording and so forth, methodology. But we will go through them. And then, of course, there's a separate process around amendments. I guess, rather than going into the internal mechanisms around the savings that the staff found, probably better to move on to the capital rephasing and any questions around that. I realise that you've done this several times already, but just in case there are any clarifications that need to be made.
Questions, overall questions?
Right.
This is specifically around capital rephasing, if there are any?
Yeah, but you have finished?
I've finished the overview, yes.
Okay, right, these are questions on everything except the amendments.
Correct, so capital rephasing, the one-offs, the property disposal and the level of service changes.
Absolutely. So, Yanni, did you have your hand up, mate?
Yeah, thank you. So just, I'm just concerned in the consultation document that the capital rephasing isn't really, isn't really clear. So if I take transport, for example, in terms of the CREF project, it's not, it's really not clear to the community that, why they're being rephased or what the options are. So is there something that we can put on that would show people? Because I think it's hard, I mean, how does the community have the ability to make submissions if they don't know what resources required to deliver each thing, if it's not about the money?
So, under the section Changes to the Capital Programme and the process part about reviewing the programme and the impacts of supply chain costs, reforms and so forth, are you suggesting there should be more detail there about why scaling to deliverable size is required? Is that the detail you're looking for?
So if people want to make submissions to the draft annual plan, what I'm trying to understand is normally people would make submissions saying, you know, we don't want the budget deferred. But how do they make a submission based on deliverability that can be considered? Do they need to know what the FTEs are associated to each project or what the percentage of resource is required in terms of deliverability so that they can make informed decisions?
Look, I'm not sure that it can be answered in terms of every capital project being treated the same way. I think that, in the reality of it, is that some projects are deferred for some reasons and others for different reasons. Supplying FTEs on every project may not be helpful to the public. I think that the explanations provided on why they're being deferred, so over the page, three waters, transport projects, waste projects, there is an explanation behind each of the major changes there as to why it's occurring. So I'm still, I'm struggling a little bit, I guess.
Right, so if people want to make submissions on the CREF project, they don't support CREF being rephased, we've spent $200,000 out of $5 million in a year. They want us to get on and deliver it, and they don't want the budgets pushed out. How do they make a submission that we can consider in terms of the budget rephasing if they don't know what resources are required to actually deliver it?
I think the answer to that would be really much the same as every other service we offer, which is that they express their view of what they want us to do without necessarily having to understand exactly every detail of how the project works and its funding and its resourcing. They're simply expressing the wish that it be moved to this position rather than explaining to us how we would achieve that. Because that's a level of technical knowledge that you just wouldn't expect of the public.
And that would then be a matter of debating the budget for elected members on advice from officers?
Except that, like, if we look at last year, Gloucester Street was a classic example where the amendment was ruled out of order and yet we've only spent 10% of that budget for this current financial year. So, you know, and we hear all sorts about, oh, we can't deliver it or we can deliver it. But actually, we didn't deliver it and we've, you know, put money on budget that we haven't spent. And yet people's submissions, you know, lead to us not being able to make amendments. So, but anyway, I just wondered whether the CREF ones, we could actually just have a chart in the consultation document that showed what the options are. If people want the CREF stuff delivered as per the LTP timeframe, that they can clearly see, you know, what they need to make a submission towards. Because at the moment, if you read what it says about CREF, it just says, with support from external funding, the Regeneration Acceleration Facility and Climate Emergency Response Fund, we're still prioritising our community-focused safety and environmental programmes and projects. And it goes, we're proposing deferring a number of transport projects of 4.4 to make up use of the 23.1 million of SURF. But it doesn't kind of say that we're deferring X amount of CREF, and if we wanted to keep that on budget, here's what it would require.
Okay. Look, we'll take advice from the communication.
Lynette's on her way down.
Yep.
And I think Lynette, it would be appropriate because it was debated in public in the Finance and Performance Committee and the specific information that was given to the elected members around CREF. Not the detail, but the CREF.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure councillor Johansson remembers.
Can you indicate to everyone, just to follow up on the CREF conversation, the budgets have been, just to be really, really clear in the public domain, the budgets have been rephased to meet the proposed delivery programmes that were set once the decisions were made from the community boards, which was late last year, late '21. Sorry, I have to try and, the budgets were rephased, no, it was last year. Once the decisions were made, we have been in the budget phasing that is proposed in this annual plan is consistent with those and is consistent with the briefing that you had at Finance and Performance about the CREF. We have not changed that, we have set that in, the budgets have stayed the same. They have been set to meet the delivery profile for the programmes following the decisions.
Okay, it's good to ask, yeah, thank you very much. Is there any more questions on this part? Celeste?
This is a question for Bruce.
For Bruce, let's just get Bruce up there. Can we take any other questions while we just get Bruce up?
Any other questions while we're waiting for Bruce? No, that's good. Well, we can get Bruce online. Is there, do you want to carry on a bit more, Peter?
I can email Bruce if this is it.
Would you mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
We don't need him.
Ask about the consultation documents specifically?
Yeah, okay. Peter, have you got any more?
I was just going to add that I think as a general principle, the staff advice would be that the community should submit on what they want.
Whatever they want.
But how it can be achieved at a technical level, like what's happening in the market and resourcing and so forth, are issues for staff to put in front of councillors as part of the debate, rather than expecting the public to know those things.
Excellent.
So that's the, I guess, overview around capital rephasing. And I think Leah, as CFO, has talked about the one-offs and the inability to sustain them in every plan over time. This has been a special year, we're aware of the stresses, financial stresses in the community. So those one-offs, which were a significant lever in getting the rates down, I think it is fair to stress that they are not something we can pull out of the hat every year. Which really leads us on to the property disposal component. Now, as I said, this is not a money-making thing. This is really about council's land portfolio and whether it's the right mix of land. The list is there, I don't think there are too many surprises on it. I guess, we've got Bruce online, is there any questioning around that at all?
So obviously councillor Celeste Donovan is emailing a question to Bruce, so which we'll respond. I can see a hand up from Sarah, may I?
Sarah?
Thanks, I'm just on the property disposal. So there's a significant number of residential red zone sections from the Port Hills. And I know that the fact of them came to the community board at a briefing last week. And there's also some housing units, so I've just got questions about those. The Port Hills residential ones, the briefing, which I wasn't able to attend because I was away, talks about a public benefit review that's going to be done by April this year and then community board input in May and then going to council in May-June. That doesn't seem to be quite what's happening here with it just going straight into the annual plan with a random list of properties. Because it talks about, you know, mechanism for property divestment not yet determined, intention clarified as part of the first tranche of reports. We don't really have a full report. We don't really have a full report on these properties, it's just kind of a list of properties to consult on.
Okay. We've got Bruce right here.
There we are.
There he is.
Yeah.
Bruce, I don't know if you caught all of that from councillor Tantum?
Yes, so, so I think that there are two different sections of the Port Hills residential red zone that have been referred to. So, the first lot that was referred to that was briefed to the community board was the 600 properties that were transferred across from the Crown. Prior to those properties being transferred, a small number, council had already identified that it wished to dispose of those and had already made decisions on that matter to dispose of those. Those properties have been treated separately to the remaining amount. What we're doing in this case is retesting that council still wishes to proceed with its previous decision to sell these properties and testing with the community because that previous decision wasn't made with the community. In future years, any decisions that will come out from the remaining 600 will be referred through the LTP and annual plan in this process for disposal as well, although as I briefed you back in November, we will still retain that option to bring those separately to you if that's preferred to deliver as well.
Okay, so, just, just checking then, the, the properties that are listed in the draft annual plan are the same ones as beforehand? The, the, the 2017 decision, okay. And would any, so would any decision in the annual plan supers, to sell them supersede the, we had a, a resolution which asked them to be offered back to prior property owners first, would that resolution then be rescinded? I know it's difficult to just trace people, but if we're able to do a broad sort of advertising campaign saying, hey, listen, these properties are up, if this, if it goes through?
Yes, and that's, as, as we discussed when we briefed you on this, we would be looking to do that in a practical, pragmatic way that allowed for people to be made aware, but we can't guarantee that we will be able to contact every previous owner or, you know, every previous red zone owner.
And when it comes to the kind of best for city approach, while we are quite keen to be able to sell some of these properties that we don't need and, and not have to maintain them anymore and they're suitable for housing, which is great, when it comes to the rest of the Port Hills red zone land, is, are we, when are we getting the big overview of best for city, which might include more sales? Is that before the next tranche of sales?
It will be before the next tranche. I understand that the timing is, we're heading towards about a May date for bringing those matters back to council and then we'd be looking at any, implementing any decisions out of that over time after that.
Right, and could you?
Can I just also go back councillor, you did mention in your first part, just some housing properties that we're looking to dispose of. So, those, those properties are ones that have reached the end of their useful life in, in general and they need to be redeveloped. Because of the policy settings of government, it's better for the community sector providers to redevelop those properties because they can get funding that the council cannot. But the rules of that funding mean that they have to own the property. So, what we're looking at is disposing of these properties to community housing providers for them to redevelop affordable, or community housing in line with council's strategy. So, we still get the outcomes, but, and, and those community groups get that funding towards it and in most cases, the resident, though the tenants will be better off because they will be paying less rent. So, it's a win-win-win situation. So, that's the reason why we're putting these ones forward, to get that, to get to that win-win-win.
That's great, and will that be clear throughout the, the information we've got? Because it will look like council is just disposing of its social housing and that, you know, we will, we will formally own lease, but that actually the, the city numbers stay the same.
We'll make sure that that's very clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, have you finished everything now, Peter?
Just about, there's one minor thing to go, just in the interest of transparency. There are some level of service changes, only a handful and they're really housekeeping. The Department of Internal Affairs has given us some, well, they've called it guidance, but they're really not asking, about how we measure a couple of our water measures and that is to move away from what was relevant in the past, which is specific targets, to simply say compliant with their legislation. So, that is a, there's a direction around how the, how the method of measurement occurs. The second one is simply to reflect some delays in the opening of Matataki and Parakiore so that we're not asking people to get attendance at things that aren't actually open yet. And lastly, the Cross Street NZ people have sought some changes to the economic development outputs that they produce and they've listed those there. So, as I said, relatively small number of changes. One of them is actually not open to debate, that's the DIA one, and the others are open to any questions you might have and failing that, we move on to the amendments.
Okay, thank you very much. All good? Right, I will now, we will now suspend standing orders so that we can deal with the councillor amendments. I will move it and Pauline will second it. All those, put, put straight the vote, yeah, no debate. All those in favour? Against? Thank you. So, we are now, the council must, this is recommendation two and amendments, the council must adopt the information that is relied on by the content of the consultation document before adopting the consultation document. So, there's, there's, I'll, I'll move this and Sam is going to second it, so there's no vote on this at this point. I will now open the matter up for discussion and amendments. Councilors have received numerous briefings on the annual plan with ample opportunity to provide input to help shape the draft document. Councilors also had an opportunity to send amendments through in advance. If there are any amendments raised today, we may not be able to put these up without due consideration of legal, financial and other matters. After each amendment, there will be a break while staff are given the opportunity to provide advice on including potential impact on rates and/or the draft financial statement. A reminder, please keep noting in comments to the debate rather than via amendments. Once all the amendments have been dealt with, there will be a further break to confirm the total financial impact of any changes. So, we now go to...
So, before you go to amendments, mayor, I have asked finance colleagues, Russell in particular, just to give us what we believe would be the ballpark figure, impact on rates if all amendments were likely to pass. So, you have the context. Russell?
Now, one thing I can say now that we've got standing orders out of the way, I want, when we do the questions, I'd like only the maximum of three questions per councillor, otherwise we will be here all day, some will do none and some will do 101. So, just keep, keep the questions very pointed and on target, so. Good, so we'll do, start at number one.
So, can I just get Russell's answer to my question?
Oh, sorry, yeah. Russell?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and, and good morning, everybody. So, there's a number of amendments there and, and not many at this point have a rates impact because the dollars haven't been quantified. So, what I can say is there's a couple of, they're focused on the UAGC. Now, that won't impact the total rates take at all, but it will alter the distribution of rates, so we'll, we can cover that when, when we get to that. The, we include the excess water charging, as, as Leah has already pointed out, if that move was to move it from 700 to the 900 litres per day, that would be an additional 0.1%.
Yeah, so I'm not looking at the individual ones because we'll deal with that in each amendment, Russell, I just want to understand for members' benefit, what we believe the overall impact is likely to be if we adopted all amendments.
Okay, so.
But we will give you time to do that, we won't drop you in it.
No. There's two, okay, that I, that we can add. And, and one is the excess water and the other is the reduction in the use of the CFF, CF fund. And so that would be 0.18 added on, so then that would be 5.86%. Moving it from 5.8.
Isn't it 0.08?
Sorry, is it 0.016?
Yeah, so that's half there.
Yeah. So, that's taken from five.
0.08.
Okay.
0.16, so 0.08.
That's what I thought.
0.08 if it was moved from 1 million to 500,000 is a move, additional rate take of 0.08.
Okay, so now we start at number one?
I still haven't got an answer to the question, clearly.
Right, here comes the answer to the question that Dawn asked, Russell?
5.76%.
Thank you.
The one she just got the answer to, what the number is. Yeah, correct.
So, it would move from 5.58 to 5.76. Ballpark.
Okay.
Just from those two.
Just two of them, okay?
Okay.
Right, we will now start with amendment number one and you guys have all got these. So, I, I call on councillor Fields to move your amendment. Yeah?
Is that the wording that we're, that we're voting on?
Up there, mate.
Number one?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I, I mean, I prefer to, to adjust that, that wording if possible, can I do that? Yeah, it's not how I'd, shall I, how do we do that?
So, would you like to tell us what you'd like?
Yep.
Because I think we've taken what you'd originally said, so.
Yep, no worries. The council fund, the head-to-head walkway, at an equivalent level to the previous financial year and engage with the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust with a view to forming a partnership to deliver.
Can you email that through?
Yep.
I think you just need to just.
Yep.
Email it.
Yeah, we'll go and see them and we'll go to number two.
We'll come back to you. Because I'd like to know if that is materially different.
Yep.
Okay, right. Now, do number two. Councillor McMillan, would you like to move your amendment?
Happy to move. Are we introducing these or are we just moving them? What's the, or are we introducing them quickly?
Introducing them quickly.
Okay, very quickly then.
And then staff will talk about it if we need to.
Yes, we do need a second.
Have you got a second, eh?
I'm sure I probably do.
Plenty.
Second? Okay, a few of them.
Lucky you.
Hey, look, I, I'm putting this up because it's a conversation that I think we should probably have often, we haven't yet had it and, and really that's about the recent distributive element of our rating system and making sure, you know, we have a good rating system, most of it's progressive, most of it's fair, but a, but a, a portion of it isn't and I think that we should discuss with the public over whether they think that no matter how much your home is worth, you, you would be paying the same uniform annual general charge or whether actually we means test it and base it on capital value.
So, ju- just to be clear, that Jake has presented it, we're not debating it, we can ask questions of staff on it, the debating bit comes later. So, if you've got any questions, make sure the question's not debated, is that okay? So, you all done, Jake?
Thank you.
Staff, would you like to tell us anything?
We've got some slides, don't we? Okay. So, one thing to keep in mind is that with, even with the UAGC set at $153, which is our proposal, fixed charges as a whole are actually falling because one of the other big fixed charges, which is the wheelie bin one, excuse me, the waste minimisation rate is falling by more than the UAGC is going up, if that makes sense. So, under our proposal, actually rates for low-value properties are increasing by a lower percentage than for higher-value properties already. Also, I think it's worth bearing in mind that if we're interested in targeting, you know, particular deprivation, the UAGC is a reasonably blunt instrument at targeting particular things like that. So, for example, if you reduce the UAGC, people who benefit from that include low-value vacant land, things like Orion's transformer boxes, you know, they've got a lot of those, you know, green boxes, Lord only knows what they do, but they have got a low, low value fear and they would benefit a lot from the reduction in UAGC, as would things like malls that have a lot of UAGC, you know, because there's a UAGC for each shop, you know, in a mall. Another factor to bear in mind is the rates rebate is really probably our best way of targeting deprivation. The maximum amount of, this is the government-funded rates rebate, the maximum amount of that is 700, so it's actually quite a lot larger than our fixed charges. And I've given an, an example here, if a house is worth about 400K, then based on our proposed rates increase, they'll be paying an extra $94 per year. But each year, this rates rebate goes up and, you know, let's say it goes up by $50, which is a rough guess, no one knows what it's going to go up by until late in June. But if that goes up by $50, then our house here will, it'll actually have a rates increase of only $44. So, it's good to kind of bear in mind what's happening with the rates rebate at the same time. Just finished with a couple of things, that council's costs are driven, you know, by a number of different things and the UAGC sort of reflects the idea that, you know, population numbers and the number of rating units drive a portion of our costs. And that last little point that is somewhat hidden, oh yes, that's right, a relatively minor point, that in the LTP, if we want to do things like provide people with wheelie bin size choice, you know, a, a big red bin, a small red bin, whatever, we would generally have to have fixed charges, you know, for those bin sizes so that you pay more for a bigger red bin or whatever. And if we do that, that means that we'd probably at the same time want to reduce the UAGC to avoid fixifying more of our charges, if you, if that makes any sense. No. You know, at the moment, our red bin is recovered on a capital value, you know, basis and if we make people pay based on bin size, then we'd be having a fixed charge type thing for red bin.
It's, it's, you're right, it is very minor.
Yeah, sorry.
Good to bring it up. So, just, just to, one question I'd like to throw in there, if this fails when it goes through in the next tranche, so to speak, we have got a foreshadowed motion by Yanni that if it went down to $25, have you got any sort of?
Yes.
Info that you'd like to share with us?
Yes, we do. So, this graph here is at $50 UAGC, so we've chosen here to look at the impact on the average residential property in each of those suburbs. And the blue line is based on our proposed level of UAGC and the suburbs ordered from left to right an increase in order of that blue bar. And so that's with UAGC at 153. If we reduce the UAGC to $50, then those orange bars are going to be the average rates increase for each suburb, so obviously some go up, some go down. Overall, you've got a broadly similar amount of variance, if you like, between suburbs, but some will benefit, some won't. I, also it's worth bearing in mind, obviously if you reduce the UAGC to such a large extent, low-value houses will actually get a rates decrease and... Um, and you can look at the, uh, table of different size rate payers. Um, the next, um, table is just, it looks extremely similar because the U A G C here is going down just a little bit more. You know, from a hundred and fifty-three now to twenty-five. It looks very similar, you'll just see that the orange bars are slightly exaggerated more compared with the previous, uh, diagram.
And the differential changes.
Oh yeah, and I should just say also that when the U A G C reduces, the, um, business differential also changes. I've had to adjust that to make sure that businesses are not, um, paying a different proportion of overall rates.
All right, thank you, Sam, then Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, um, and I'm not sure if it's a question for you or the legal team. I'm just trying to understand, with the excess water charge, uh, we were unable to remove it next year because we'd have to go and publicly consult, yet to me, dropping this from a hundred and fifty-three to fifty or twenty-five seems like quite a significant change in policy. What, what's the difference and what's the threshold around why we can do what, um, uh, you know, Jake's after versus why we can't with water charge? So I don't know if that's a legal question or a, just trying to understand the threshold.
It might be both legal and CFO because there are two different bits.
Yes, thank you, if, if I may start, so differences with the water charges, we're talking about a targeted rate which was for a specific purpose. And altering or removing, the key thing to be a reminder is, are we undermining the purpose of the rate? This is a general rate, which has a different basis. So unless the whole rate was being removed, um, that would need to be a special consultative procedure. But tweaking that or changing the figure is, is allowable.
Okay, so, but the advice that came through with the excess water charge was that if we increased the rate too much to make the rate null and void, uh, then effectively we couldn't do it, whereas this is dropping it substantially, i- is it not the same purpose or intent behind effectively what's happening here?
The difference with the targeted rate is that it has a purpose, uh, to reduce the water, uh, usage and the impact on the infrastructure. This is a general rate that applies to everybody.
Yes, yeah, I, I get that, sorry, this will be my, because we're only allowed three, this is it. Word it very, very carefully, and there's many parts to it. Um, oh look, don't, yeah, what, what I'm trying to get to is, so can we, so any general rate we can amend to make the rate null and void?
The figures before you are not null and void, they're still a figure, then it's, it's not a.
Even though it's a material change?
It's a change in the figure, but it is still a general rate that applies to everybody.
Yeah. I'll talk to Leah at morning too.
Thanks, um, I'm just wondering, the, um, the properties in the lower value sort of suburbs who would see a, a rates decrease from this, do we have any idea of, I'm generally in favour of that, so, but do we have any idea of how many of those are rentals? So that the, the landlords who'd be pocketing the difference rather than actually being passed on to, um, to the lower income home, home owners?
We haven't done that.
Yeah, is that information available though? Or like, do we have, you know, that kind of information so we can make that kind of analysis? Because what I wouldn't like to see is us decreasing rates, um, and landlords pocketing it rather than it going into those who need it the most. Like whether there's other ways for us to support people?
Yeah, I, I'm not entirely sure, I think that information will be around.
Yeah.
And I've made some initial inquiries to get that and, and start have a look at it, but I haven't done that yet.
Yeah, because it would be really useful, thanks.
I think the question becomes, is it readily available or is it something that's very difficult to secure because there's a difference?
Yanni? Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, I was just interested in, um, the business differential, uh, in terms of, um, not reducing that, would that have much change to the, to the graph?
So your question is if we reduced U A G C but kept the business differential at two point two-two, it would make a big difference to the graph?
In, in what way would it make a difference?
Um, residential properties would face much lower rates increases because business would be paying a lot more.
So do we have a graph that shows what that would be?
Not right now, but it wouldn't take me long to produce one.
I suggest we do that in the tea break, so you've got the additional information.
Can I just say something, I just think you need to be very careful thinking that too. I mean, the reason we have proposed in, in your plan to, uh, increase the business differential is so that way, from a fairness point of view, is that they won't be substantially worse off than they were in the past, right? So it's just putting the rates back to where, you do what you're suggesting councillor Johansson, I just want everyone to be clear that all of a sudden, uh, with the revaluation, those businesses will not only be keeping their rates where they were, they will be increasing them. So you will, so.
I guess the flip side is the people in Bromley have got a big revaluation, so they've got a big rates increase percentage wise. And so, but I just, rather than getting the, I mean, the information between twenty-five and fifty seems pretty small for the, you know, it doesn't seem like it's worth having that amendment given the, just the difference in those two charts.
Are you removing your amendment, your foreshadowed amendment, Yanni?
It'd be quite good to see before I do that though, just what that business differential, what that would look like if that was.
So yeah, you, uh, you're only, uh, asking, are you to see the suburb graph?
Yeah, like the, the one that you've got that showed the fifty and the twenty-five?
Yeah.
Um, just, I'd just be interested in having that at the, at what the proposed business differential was.
But you need to see, so you've got all the information, the impact on the businesses to doing that. So you would have, would have to give you more information on it, so we can't do it, but you've got to be able to consider both.
Yeah, no, that's cool, thanks.
So just for my clarity then, uh, councillor Johansson, is your foreshadowed amendment remaining on the table or?
Well, well, yes, but depending on what that information says, because it seems like you're only talking about, well, even less than a percentage point difference between twenty-five and fifty. I mean, it's almost negligible.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we're coming down from a hundred and fifty-three to fifty.
So I'm happy to withdraw my twenty-five amendment to leave it with the fifty, but I would like to get that, just a little bit more.
So we'll withdraw your amendment, but the information, if we're able to supply it through the break, we will sec, we will do it if we can.
Yeah, and the second question I had was in regards to the, um, the rates rebate. Um, the threshold is, I understand, it's about forty-five thousand dollars a year. So for people to qualify, like I appreciate that that's a targeted thing to help people, but do we have any sense of the uptake of it in our city? Like either, you know, who's eligible versus who up, up, what the uptake is, but also, it does seem in terms of like median, um, incomes that, that, that threshold is so low that a lot of people wouldn't qualify for it who might be facing.
Um, we can definitely find some numbers on the uptake. Um, it's best to look at last year because a lot of people leave it to the last minute to, um, apply. So we could maybe look at, um, how many did it last year. In terms of the income threshold, um, it really very much depends on the number of dependents, um, in the family and also what your rates actually are. Um, I was doing a few, um, you know, you can play around with that rates online rates rebate calculator and just, you know, plug some numbers in. And it's pretty easy to get, you know, the, um, rebate still when you've got income of sixty thousand. If you've got dependents and if your rates are, you know, quite high. Okay? So, you know, you can play around with that and, and get a, a really good im- impression of the, um, level of the income.
Thank you very much. Uh, Aaron?
Yeah, so, um, just because I know how much my fellow councillors like to make informed decisions, do we have a graph of the range of U A G Cs across New Zealand? Would be quite helpful to have of what's the lowest, what's the highest?
Yeah.
Because are, are we going into territory where no one else is or is, or are most councils at fifty dollars?
We, um, so I guess there's a quick question, um, would you be interested in the U A G C on its own or all fixed charges?
I think it's relevant in terms of, you can't look at that in isolation, you'd need to understand what councils were doing with all their other rates as well.
We, we don't, uh, sorry, we, we don't have it for everyone, um, but we do have it, that for a few different metros. Um, and, um, just to reiterate advice I've given previously, we are very low. Um, we are, uh, as far as metro councils go, we are very intensive capital value-based rating system.
Right.
Yeah.
Which leads me to my, the other half of this question.
You mean the second question?
The second question.
Yanni's already on seven.
All right, some of his people choice colleagues are lending some, so Jake, Jake's now out. Oh, but.
Moving right along, Aaron.
The, um, so the other one is, uh, and Sarah did kind of raise it, would be to see a graph of home ownership across the city. Because we could be doing this to only benefit a tonne of landlords. So it'd be nice to see that suburb by suburb where the ownership rates are. Just because the properties are low value, it might be a rental.
And the, and the foreign ownership of those rentals as well.
I think we're going into.
Okay, so are you all done, thank you, Aaron? Andre?
Uh, we, we may but not.
Now you're done, right, so thank you very much, so that means that we've got a mover and a second, we've had all the discussion, uh, questions. So that is now moved forward to the next level after.
Now we move on to amendment four, because we're just doing what, who, whose amendment, who's the seconder? A very short view, not a, uh, get your debate in before you get to the questions, questions of officers and then move on to the next one.
Okay.
Because you've got a few to get through.
Would, I'd like to call, uh, Victoria Hinstock to move your amendment please.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, um, it's as written in front of us that the amendment is to defer construction of the wheels to wings route, sections one, two and three for a period of up to twelve months. And that's to allow sta, allow staff in the local councils to work together with the affected communities on those previously identified design issues. So it's about, this is about achieving better alignment. Uh, and I've worked with staff on this and you'll see on our spreadsheet that this one is supported, so I don't intend to go into it any further. And I'll be happy for council to talk to it.
Seconder is councillor.
Aaron, seconder, yeah, so staff advice please?
Staff advice, sorry. Um, this cheese is very short.
I think it must be what I sat on.
It's May that's short. Uh, look, we, we have worked with councillor, um, Hinstock on this and it is not deferring the project. We are just not starting construction, the budgets that we had on, um, on program, that stayed on program last week with the SEF discussions have stayed on. Uh, we are working through the design process and engaging, we're going to look, as staff, we are going to look to engage, uh, and the local councils are going to look to engage with us, with the community to resolve the design issues that have been identified through the process. Um, we've talked at the briefing about those design issues and that we've got quite a, a long and extensive list of individual design issues. So that's how we're going to do that and work with it. Um, but it isn't effectively changing the process that we were moving forward with, but we're working with the councillors to do that.
Okay, thank you, so Tyler?
So just to be clear, you're not deferring the construction, it's still supposed, it's still as planned? But you're somewhat fast-tracking the consultation with the community in alignment with the councillors?
We are going to, well, so normally when we go into a detailed design process, we get on with it, we deal with the community, but we don't necessarily engage with our local councillors or the local councillor in that point. We just get on and get it done, we've had the approval to get it done. So we're going to do that in a slightly different way and work with, um, councillor Hinstock and councillor Keown to resolve those issues with the community members. So there, there's a lot of individual issues along the route that we're going to get resolved. But yes, the, the budget says they were on, did not allow for construction to start.
Okay, so there is no financial risk if we vote yes for this?
No.
Okay.
Pauline? So it's a little bit confusing now, so last week when we, um, agreed not to defer any of this, this, and now you're saying this is a deferral, but it's not a deferral. So would you be equally happy to carry on as we agreed last week, when we talked about the SEF program? Would you be equally as happy to proceed in that manner as, as you would in this?
So we are proceeding in that manner, we're changing just the engagement with the local councillor.
So why is that an annual plan issue?
I think that's the point, it was not, it's supposed to be more a noting, staff are saying that this won't change the budgets. The budget that was agreed last week, I think it's a million, isn't it Lynette, this year, will still continue, so we're not changing that budget. Construction was not supposed to start this year, but all that, that Lynette is noting is that, following the conversations and the concerns raised by the local councillors, that they will engage with them on it, doesn't change anything. Am I correct, Lynette?
So this would be a noting provision, not a decision? And it's actually, it's not going to slow the project delivery date down at all in your view?
No, one of the things that has come to light, so I should share this with the council today, it has come to light since our briefing and, and the work we've done with the SEF is that with all of the changes with, um, national funding, it is unlikely that in this year we would get approval for NZTA funding on this. However, it is more likely to come through in the next N L T F. So it, it doesn't change the process, we will still get that approval in. I know that's a big bomb, we always, we have worked with NZTA on this, I don't expect them to decline it. However, they have very, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? They've got very tight budgets now that are getting tighter and harder to meet with everything that's happened with Suckon Gabriel round the country. They have said it, it was always on a possible list, but they have verbally advised us that it's unlikely to get funding.
So, so the wording in this is, is, is not appropriate really when you're saying you weren't going to do, begin any construction anyway in this year. And I would assume, and in my past experience, staff have always worked with local councillors on the cycle waste. So I don't understand.
But not usually through the detailed design process, not, not at this level, through this process.
So just, I think we're just, if it's going to be a noting provision, we need to get the wording correct as well. If it wasn't going to start construction anyway, we're not deferring it. So I'd rather have that deferral word taken out, anyway, that's just my view.
Victoria?
Oh, oh, sorry, Sam was, oh, you go Victorian then, Sam.
I'd like to just have another chat about this construction issue because I asked you this very same question yesterday. And you said that there were some elements of construction that would have been planned in the next year. So I'm, I'm hearing something different again today. Um, and I'd also like to just clarify then, so from the public's perception, the Waka Koutahi funding was already available for this project, so just clarifying what I'm hearing of the public, that at this moment, it is not confirmed.
No.
So there's two issues there.
So I didn't, all right. There was never significant construction planned to start next year. That budget wouldn't have allowed it, if we had moved forward, we would have been doing a bring back. So if we stick to the budgets we've got, we do the detailed design, we move forward with the local councillor, we keep moving forward, we keep the project moving forward as we agreed last week at the SEF discussion with the, with the resources that we've got. That's my understanding of the conversation we had yesterday.
Okay.
The Waka Koutahi subsidy on significant proj, on improvement projects is, is applied for post, we put a business case in, post council decision to move to construction. So we put an implementation business case in. We have always said along the way, it is expected to get it, we've explained the process before to council on a number of occasions that we apply for it, we've already, it, it has always been indicated on a possible list, we have always expected it to get support. We still do expect it to get, get support, it is we're in the N L T F cycling, cycle that we get that support from it. Now, if I hadn't brought it up today, I would have had to report it to council at another time if we hadn't got it. So I knew it, so I brought it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, I, I appreciate that it was, you said yesterday, there wasn't significant construction, but the point was that you said there was some construction even though it was not significant. So that's the point that I want to make, to clarify the questions that are being asked about construction, because you will be deferring it. You're not intending to do any construction regardless of how significant.
No, for up to twelve months.
Okay, thank you, Sam?
Yes, uh, thank you, I'm not sure if it's a question for you Lynette or Russell, just around the funding then in terms of this. So at the moment, you, because you mentioned potentially a bring back, can someone just clarify, I'm just going back to what we had last week, how much for the next financial year is in the budget for Herewood Road, Wheels to Wings?
Two point eight.
Two point eight, okay.
For the three sections, it's a, it's approximately two point eight for the three sections.
And, and so what, so am I right in saying now what we'd originally and, and sort of following on a wee bit? And I get, we may get it in a future year, but that two point eight will be funded purely from council this year because we haven't got any, any funding?
No, the debt, the way we work it with NZTA is the, um, is the detailed design is covered through the implementation request. Um, they still anticipate being, uh, no, we've got the pre-implementation sorted.
So, so, sorry, just, just so I'm clear, who, who's paying that two point eight, is it?
It's a mix of. It's a mix of NZTA and council. It's the construction that's not supported at this stage, the implementation.
Okay, so design.
Yeah, and so just, so just last one, just so I'm really, really clear. So the construction isn't, isn't supported at the moment by NZTA through that fund. Not to say it won't be in future, but if we, to Pauline's point, if we, we're actually just carrying on as we were with construction in this year, that would be council funded, even though we have no surety over the NZTA funding.
If we did it, we wouldn't sign a contract until we had surety of that, that funding, or we would come back and talk to council before we signed that contract.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, okay, no, I, I see where that's coming from now. That, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Yanni.
Thank you. Are there any other projects that we're expecting to get funding from that we're not likely to get in this current round?
Oh, that's.
That's too big.
Yeah, that's got nothing to do with this, so thanks very much.
Well, can I, sorry, can I just check then, in terms of this, this actual project? So does this, just, I was just, the NLTF. When is the next funding round that you think it's eligible for?
Twenty four thirty four. It's the same, it's the same funding round as our LTP.
Twenty four thirty four, so.
It's twenty four twenty seven, sorry.
Twenty seven. So basically, I'm just trying to understand when we'd be in a position to know from NZTA.
And our next year, our next LTP aligns with the LTP, the NLTP period, so it's next year.
And if we'd known this when we did the surf things, would we have still made the same decision to keep this not being deferred and give the seven million back to government?
We've not given any money back to government.
No, we haven't given any, I'm sorry. I would not have changed my advice at the surf meeting if that's the case, because this is still a decision that has a hearings panel decision. The community still have, have an ability to rely on that decision. That's the advice we've had.
Okay, that's, right, so this doesn't create, does this bring up any resource?
No.
No, okay.
We, we, we've, we've done this to death and we've got a mover and a seconder, so it moves across to the, the next phase. Thank you very much.
Amendment five?
Amendment five, which is?
Excess water charge.
Yes, excess water charge. Councillor McDonald.
And can we have your seconda, please?
Me.
You.
I mean, we've probably done this one to death and the staff have already been through the questions and answers. Just very simply, I fundamentally think we should be lifting the limit on this. I hear from people every day who have a severe, I guess, have had an allergic reaction to what we have done as the council in terms of this. I think we've already, I'm putting this up.
Sounds a bit debatey, this. And that's rich coming from me.
Yeah. Well, I'm happy to stop, Mayor, if you don't want me to talk.
Carry on.
No, the reality is we just wanted to lift the limit, make it a bit more consistent with under and over charges at the moment. I think the shared metre thing is still a big problem across the city. And yeah, I think nine hundred is a good compromise. My preference would have been to remove it altogether. But they tell me I can't, so we, we won't at this stage. So yeah, there's questions for staff if they want it.
Just got a mover and a seconder. We happy for that. Go to the next, Mark, here, far away. Oh, you're all good? Okay, yep. So that means we're on to amendment six. Councillor Cotter.
Thank you. And councillor McClellan's going to second it. It's self-explanatory. It's just, I think it's better to give people an option of whether to use a million dollars or less of that, say half a million from the capital endowment fund, because it will affect people being able to apply to use that fund next year. So we'd only leave, what was it, five hundred and something in there? So it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just putting an option in this consultation document. And if that was passed, the rates increase would go from five point five eight to five point six six if there were no other amendments agreed to. Thank you.
Any other questions? Far away, Sam, yeah?
Just in terms of what, what would we be consulting on in terms of the actual number we go out with? No, which one?
Options, the million that's suggested by staff.
Okay.
Or the five hundred, which would have a rate?
Yeah, okay. I haven't quite done that before.
Okay, so that one's jumped across the line, so we're now on to number seven. Celeste, here she comes. Celeste, far away, mate. Sorry, it's a staff advice on the. Yeah, they've got a mover and a seconder. And we had.
We're just saying that there's no, no advice that will be matter for you to consider whether you want to go out with the two options or not.
Is it, yeah, okay, so, okay. So amendment number seven, Celeste, please.
Yeah, so.
I'll second it, by the way.
Oh, yes, Phil's seconding it.
I'll third it.
Got a third here. Any fourths? We've got a fourth, yes. Sorry. So today we've got an opportunity to get alongside a community-led project. For those that didn't see the front page of the press last week, this project has been community-led by a group that was allocated two point five million dollars in funding through the Canterbury Earthquake Appeal Trust. And the concept of the project, which has been led by the community, is to spend two five, two point five million dollars of this grant, turning a thousand square metres of largely vacant land behind Marine Parade, Pier Side Building, into a village green. So this effectively becomes a community hub where people can gather. And this village green, much like we've seen in other suburban areas, will become a place where we have music, we have busking and events, and it's going to be surrounded by bars, restaurants and shops. The key thing to note with this project is that we have an opportunity here to effectively provide some council support to make sure that we align the delivery of this community in private partnership alongside some council planning in terms of the public realm element.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thanks for your support.
Just, just question, was it two point two or two point five, I thought?
The, the original grant was two million and then they, we, the community leadership group received another two hundred and then I believe they received another three hundred. And some of that, of course, is around GST and extra costs. So they want to make sure that they have the full.
So sorry, that extra three hundred to get it up to two point five is not this three hundred, just to be clear to everyone?
No, that's separate, yeah.
That's right, that's fine, thank you.
So can we have staff advice, please?
Bruce has got a little bit to start with.
Yeah, I'll just start off with the context. So you're aware from councillor Donovan that there is private investment in commercial happening and some community investment. So we've been looking at this and looking to make sure that the work minimises disruption if we were to do it. And also potentially helps with public confidence. So there's some benefits in bringing this forward. We have worked with councillor Donovan and more recently the community board and suggested that there needs to be some substitutions brought forward for this. Given that we're bringing forward money, it's already on budget, but there are resource constraints. So Lynette can probably talk more about what those resource constraints are, but those will be the big considerations that councillors will have to make if they're going to make this decision.
Yeah, so from my point of view, I apologise to councillor Donovan, I didn't, I haven't had a lot of knowledge of this project. And staff only talked with the community board about it last week. I think there's quite a bit more work to do to understand the resource implications. A three hundred thousand dollar budget in next financial year is a very big consultant resource implication for us. And they are the very resources that we, we were talking about during the surf programme. So, and this project actually had seventy eight thousand deferred next year as part of the surf discussion. So I do think there's quite a bit more work to do to understand the resource implications and understand the, the ideal programme that is going to happen. It is, it is a concept that is out for public feedback. I understand that. At the moment, as staff, we don't understand what that means from a resource perspective in next financial year. So our staff advice is that there would need to be a substitution and we haven't had one put forward. But we also think, I also think there's more work to be done in order to understand that properly. It may be that we only need fifty of that next year and the rest in the year after. I'm not, I'm just saying, we don't know. So I fully support staff and councillor Donovan in working to align with this, but I don't think this is the right time to do the change. That's my advice.
Okay, Jake, did you have something to say?
Question?
A question, of course.
Okay, simple question then. If we were to bring this money forward, would it progress work any quicker? Like the transport programmes fall, would?
I, I don't know where I'd find the resource to do it if you brought the money forward.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Jake, so that one has crossed over the line. Thank you very much.
Amendment eight.
Amendment eight. Councillor Peters, would you like to move your amendment?
Yes, happy to move. This project is one that was scheduled in FY twenty five.
Is your mic on?
Yep, mic's on. Scheduled on the long-term plan, FY twenty five. Desire in the community is to try and bring this forward. This is a safety and massive congestion issue out in Hornby. And has been, was due to be done before the earthquake, was put back because of the earthquake and 12 years later, the community are really keen to get this progressing. And Andre was offering to second this.
Who's Andre? Councillor Moore? Oh, Andre, right. Andre's seconda, Sam, thank you. Okay, have we got any staff or staff information, please? And then Erin's got a question.
Again, it's a balancing act. It's in twenty five. To bring it forward, we would need something else to be released. Understand that that's not ideal. The, just for reference, for the, for all councillors, all intersections are ranked across the city for safety. There are higher intersections across the city that we are moving forward with. I understand that that's frustrating for some communities. But we really do need a substitution if we're going to change it.
Tyler?
We're walking bowling ball. Just a quick question, what rank is that intersection based on the safety measures?
If you can't answer.
I can't answer it straight away. Somebody told me yesterday that I've.
So I suggest you get that information in the tea break because we're not debating and voting on them till after.
Okay, cool. And the next question is around reporting. Do you have statistics on reported incidents in comparison to non-reported? I know it's a little bit tough to get this kind of data.
Yeah, from a data sense, that actually tells you why we don't have that information. If it's not reported, we don't have it. However, we do. So we, when we look at intersections and intersection, and, and, and look, I need to commit to doing a presentation to you all at council to explain how we develop collective risk map across the city. But when we look at it, we look at a combination of the NZTA police database, the CAS database. And also we look through our own system to see where tickets have been raised or comments have been raised. We, we look to gather up as much information as we can on those to feed into that process.
I see. Yeah, by non-reported, I, I want, didn't want to sound stupid. It was about reporting to the police, not reporting to council.
Yeah, no, it's all, no, it's all reported. All of the information we've got is what's reported through the police. So if it's reported to the police, it is logged in the database.
Okay, okay.
Even if it's a non-injury accident, so, so there's injury, fatality and non-injury accidents. So even if it's a non-injury, if it's been reported to the police via an insurance system or something like that, then it's logged in the system.
I see. No, thanks, Lynette.
Okay, thank you. And just one question from me, please Lynette. So what you would prefer if this went ahead for X number of dollars, whatever it is, you'd like to see a reduction somewhere else in that ward or area to cover it, so to speak?
It's not ward or area specific.
Yeah, we need to have somewhere else that we're not doing the work because those, those resources need to go off the work that they're doing and on to this to do it. It's really what the issue we've got is.
Yep, thank you. So that's across the line. So we're on to number nine, which Dawn's just gonna.
Councillor Johansson, my advice to you is that this isn't an amendment and that can you raise it as part of the debate so we can put it as a noting item, please? If you're happy to do that. I think officers had already asked you that.
Yeah, sure. I was just concerned that the staff advice suggested there wasn't, there was more information required, but staff have actually already been tasked with providing a lot of information around this in an email response I've had from last year when we adopted it. So, yeah, I mean, I'm happy, I just, but I don't want it delayed to the LTP. I want to actually consider it as part of the draft anyway.
So we, we will put it as a noting item, yeah, as part of the debate.
So that brings us up to number ten, which is.
Sorry, can I just be clear? Will there be information that's been able to provided in the consultation document around what we could consider?
You want, sorry, you'd love to be a little bit more specific because all you're asking for is for a creation of a line item to implement the Aipahu guidance plan.
Yeah, so if you take.
That's a, that's a detailed matter in terms of delivering.
There's currently, as I understand, no, no budget attached to this guidance plan. There's a, if you take the mid Heathcote linear plan, which is great, there's a line item that, you know, a few hundred thousand every year to do stuff. But when we adopted the plan, we asked staff to identify what could be done within existing budgets. And they were looking at different units around what they were doing. So it was just to get some visibility of what's committed to this or, or not, so that the community can, can understand what we're doing. That, that's all. I mean, I'm happy if it's easier just to be a noting provision, but.
Yeah, I'm happy for it to be a noting provision. What you're asking for, staff should be able to provide you with the factual information to say what is physically in the budget or not. So can you please ensure that that happens, whomever I need to be looking at?
Also, in, in the Three Waters area, you're right councillor, that you requested the council resolution was to look within existing budgets over the next 12 months. But the pressure on Three Waters budgets for doing this sort of thing at the moment, there is just no way. That's why I've suggested it goes out to an LTP decision. You look for an existing budget. We look, honestly, there is no room at the moment.
I'm happy to move a substitution for like the Hagley Oval. I think it's a five million dollar project.
It's not within the same activity.
Okay, so you.
We'll, we'll, I'll have a conversation in the tea break. If there's anything specific I can wrangle out of my offices, I should tell you.
Do you want me to recirculate the advice I had previously?
If you could, please, that would be good.
So Sarah, is this question, it is related to that?
I was, I was just gonna say that while the Low Heathcote guidance plan, it's not just Three Waters because it's broader than just the actual waterway boundaries. And so it's not just Three Waters budgets, it's parks and reserves and kind of stuff as well.
Thank you. So now we're on to amendment number ten and Yanni, this is one of yours. Please straightforward.
We're nearly there. We're not much longer. Keep going, we'll have a break at the end.
Okay, so, sorry, Yanni, I didn't hear. Did you, did someone second it? Did I? Yeah?
Are you doing seconders for amendments now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you, you're putting this amendment, who's?
Who's your seconda?
Celeste, thank you.
So, I mean, all it is, is the money that we've taken off for the major cycleways getting put back on with small reductions in the stadium streets, some of the stadium street budgets and also the ferry road active transport improvement budget. I've still not really had clarity over the Phillips Town ferry road active transport budget around the quantum that's been deferred. It doesn't align with the previous advice, so I'm struggling a little bit on that one. But, yeah, so anyway.
Okay, so Jake would like to have some question?
Just one. So Lynette, similar kind of to the last one, you know, bearing in mind that dollars on, on a bit of paper are all well and good. But obviously it's, you know, people up on whatever floor it is you guys are based, I'm not sure which one. But that actually have to do, there's a four, they have to do all the work. So if we move this money around for these, for the streets outside the stadium, will either of these projects actually happen any sooner? I guess it's the first one.
No. I don't believe they will.
So, okay, well, that sort of negates my second question, which. So, okay, well, that sort of negates my second question, which is what would the effect be on the stadium?
I think the shifting the money on the stadium has a bigger effect, because it, they'll-
Right.
Not having the money on the stadium slows that down.
So can I just clarify, no, hold on, I was like, wait a minute, can I just clarify? What you're saying is if we were to move this money, it probably wouldn't have any effect on the projects that are preferred to be swapped in, but it would have the effect of delaying the streetscapes around the stadium, which obviously would push a whole bunch of extra cost on the council.
It, it would definitely have an impact on the Takaha Street's project.
It's tiny amounts of money, like off those projects.
When you get to the debate, councillor Johansson's-
Can I just check with staff then? Like, my understanding is that council contracts and the delivery of the, the MCRs. So we set up a special panel of private providers to be contracted into council to do that work under the sort of Velos group. So is that, is that group able to work on non-cycleway projects?
No, they're contracted to work on cycleway projects, but if we took them off and put them on to other projects, they couldn't do the cycleway projects. But they're also doing a number of cycleway projects at the moment, not particularly the aim.
Right. So, so what's the capacity for them just to do the design work on the Apahu Heathcote River Road and the Atacara Avon River Road? Given it's only a hundred and five K, doesn't seem like a big amount of budget to just get the designs done, given that we've got a team to do.
Designs are not going to be done for a hundred and five K, but it was the start of that. They are not progressing those at the present time. In the last, the meeting last week deferred them for one year. It is not a big impact on the delivery of those programmes. Those teams are working really hard on delivering the West Ark, Northern Line, South Express, all the other G M C Rs that we're working on at the moment as well. So we haven't got an unlimited resource even out in the, which is why we came to you last week and said we have a resourcing issue nationally. We don't have enough engineers and designers to do the work that we need to do.
Okay, so that's number ten all done, and that's across the line. Thank you, uh, Yanni and Celeste. Now, number eleven, is it?
That's changed, yes. So are you happy to have that as a noting provision, councillor Donovan?
Yep.
Okay, so number eleven's a noting one. Now we go back to number one. And then we have a cup of tea here.
You're doing really well, members, by the way.
You know, we are doing very well. So number one.
Number one, we need to go back to amendment number one.
Yeah, because, Tyron, change the wording.
No, just take, I, I, I'm gonna rescind that, that amendment wording.
You've rescinded them.
Yeah, and just talk to the, to the wording that we've got here. I'm, I'm just a little bit confused, because basically all I want is for the, for the funding for the head-to-head walkway to remain as it originally was at two hundred and thirty K instead of thirty K. If that amendment achieves that, then I'm happy with that.
Okay, Andrew?
Sure. So, you know, much like what you've heard from um other units-
Oh, sorry, can I just check? Have you got a second, councillor Fields? Thank you, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, so much like you've heard from other, um, other unit heads, it's really a deliverability matter. So um, there's been, you know, a reasonable amount of work over a number of years. This, for those that don't know this, the head-to-head walkway runs right around Ocarapo, the Littleton Harbour, from head-to-head. Um, and it's been going for a number of years and it's funded, is a total of about two point three million of funding across um the, what remains in the current long-term plan. Um, in addition to the funding that's, the question that's been raised this morning, there is another four hundred thousand for a part of the head-to-head walkway for the, a repair of the um retaining wall between Ellendale and Governors Bay. Um, so there is money being spent in the capital area on that walkway. There's a separate project, which is the one that's being referred to, um, where um the staff advice is to re-phase it until the next year. Um, and that will allow staff to get on with additional planning, design, um approvals and consenting. So if the money sits in this um FY twenty four, it's highly likely that we wouldn't be able to get to construction at this point. And so really what we're saying is um re-phasing the funding is re-phasing it aligned with deliverability. It's not going to impact the programme. And we, we can bring back that funding if it speeds up. So that, that's essentially the staff advice, that this is a long-term programme. The funding fluctuates from year to year and we, we tap into the funding when we're ready to deliver.
So you mentioned two projects. Both of them have had the funding deferred, right? So the seawalls, I'm comfortable with that, that's fine. Thirty K, so you've, four hundred K's been deferred on that. I am a hundred percent comfortable with that. What I'm talking about is project four oh eight, funding for general maintenance and track building on the head-to-head walkway. So the original funding was two hundred and thirty K and currently it's thirty, it's been thirty proposed. Um, it's only that two hundred K that I, that I want to have reconsidered. So the seawalls, let's just take that out of there. Don't conflate them or confuse the, the, the other councillors on that. Like, it's, it's, it's just, yeah, good, okay, cool. So I just want to make sure that we're really clear on that it's the track building, cool.
Start. I'm just making it clear to the councillors that there are more than one project that relates to, to the head-to-head delivery. There's more than one project in our capital programme.
Yep, yep. Okay, cool. And so the, the second, so next follow-up question, the, if I may. So you're talking about um planning and consenting that, that needs to happen, that there isn't resource to do. Can you, can you talk to me, so I just need some clarification.
We're not saying there isn't resource to do. What we're saying is that is the next phase of work that needs to be done, that is resourced. But the funding that's required for the construction works is unlikely to be needed in FY twenty four for the next phase. If it, if it does accelerate, we can bring it back from FY twenty five. It won't impact the delivery of the programme.
So my understanding is that there are sections of track. So for example, the section between Ellendale and Teddington, sections out near Purdo, um, and um another one that escapes you at the moment, that with some engagement with, for example, the Rod Donald Trust, we would be able to advance quite significantly if the funding was there. Um, and it would not be dependent on, on staff's ability to, to plan. There's no consenting issues with private landowners. So it, so it's kind of like, there is, if the money is there, the will is there, the people are there, the resourcing's there, everything's there, we just need the money.
Staff, staff are continuing with work on the head-to-head, on the next phases. Um, so what's in the current draft plan shifts two hundred thousand into the following year. And I guess what I've been trying to say is if, if we get to the point that we can construct more this financial year, we can still tap into that budget. Nothing's lost, is what I'm saying. It just, it doesn't show up to the public. But I guess, you know, we, we, we're working with the working party. There's a working party associated to this head-to-head, so.
Correct. So, so then why not put it into the, into the annual plan? The wills that the-
Because the advice I've been given, and I, I, you know, I can only go by that. The advice I've been given is we're not likely to need it in the next financial year.
The advice that I've got says that if, if the money is there, it can be, it can be-
Sure. Unfortunately, I don't have that advice. I've got my staff's advice, so, yeah.
I'm just, kind of just wanted to check, like, do we need, like, I've had to provide substitutions. Does everyone need to do that as well? Like, do we need a substitution for this? On the stadium streets? I mean, I, I support this amendment, but I just wondered, if we do a substitution, will that enable us to proceed with the amendment and get the work done?
There's no substitution required.
Because.
Sorry, the impression I have from um staff is that if they really, if, if the work can be done or they find that they need it to be done, if it's, it can be done just by pulling money back. I'd, I'd pull it forward, but it's called back.
Yeah, I'd, yeah, I'd pull it forward as well.
So.
That's what Andrew has clearly stated.
Yeah. So that's, everyone's got a, um, move in a second for everything. We've put some down as notings. So I'm suggesting we have a breather and come back at midday. And we will move into the debate and vote for all the amendments in the resolution two. And we will have five minutes each to do our debate if you require it. Thank you.
On the amendments and the resolutions.
Welcome back everybody. We've got one of the questions that was asked about Amy's Road. Lynette has diligently worked over the morning tea break and got some information which she will share with us and then Sam will get us up to speed on where the amendments are actually at because a little bit of the wording has changed in some of them but go for your life Lynette.
Go to Tato. Yes, and I have to thank this team for getting those for us. So we were talking about Amy Springs and Springs Awatia and in the system they're actually ranked as two separate intersections which they are, they're an offset intersection. So really quickly, Amy Springs is ranked medium-low and it is number 639 in the collective risk list, so it's very low. And Springs Awatia is medium-low as well and it is 286. They are quite low in the speaker. Sometimes it happens when intersections are a bit more difficult, people take their time and so you don't get that but it's not, it's a very uncomfortable intersection to drive through, I do agree with councillor Peters.
Thank you Lynette.
Thank you.
Okay, Sam?
So I'm just going to use this microphone. So there has been an update to amendment one which Tyrone and councillor Harrison Hunt are happy with. There's also been an update to amendment four from councillor Henstock and Keown. And also a very minor change to amendment ten which councillor Johansson was happy to, was just removing one of thirty four rules which was just a minor, I suppose, error in that. So that's, they're the three changes. Number four please Karen.
Okay. Good, thank you Sam. Right. We, we will now debate all amendments and any other matters in resolution two together. A reminder that councillors will have a further chance to debate the overall draft annual plan in the next section. So the debate, one debate, five minutes each councillor for all amendments in resolution two and I know Pauline's been waiting for this because we're going to go around the table and start with her first.
But just a process question first, I thought we were going to have the rates increase impact alongside these before we voted on them, surely?
Well, we've been told what the number...
The overall position which would be 5.76.
Yeah, but some are bigger than others.
If all of them...
I shouldn't say that.
Just off.
We have had that in the past.
Yeah, where, where we can do it.
Well, this we are, we are signing off a budget, a draft budget, so if we don't know the numbers, it's a bit difficult. Does it too, take too long to calculate or... I mean, some of them will have no impact at all, I understand.
Just through you mister mayor. So certainly where there's an OpEx change, we can give the quantities for that and have already done so but we can go over again as we come through each one. So far as the CapEx matters go, they're generally not of a huge nature so they really move, because they're debt funded, loan funded, they virtually don't move the dial at all so it's a, yeah.
Even that would help if we knew which ones were CapEx and which ones were OpEx implications.
Okay, so the only two that are operational are the community endowment fund and the excess water.
I do understand though that Paul, that...
Playing both, doesn't she know?
Yeah, yeah, correct. And we're not, you're not actually asking to amend that CEF one are you, you're just saying you want to put it in the consultation.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's really, OpEx is just point one. Just for the councillors' benefit, it needs to get to about 2 million of capital changes to actually get an impact on the rates. Okay?
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Very good.
Thank you Pauline, sorry, she's all yours for five minutes.
All right. Actually haven't got much to say.
What?
No. That just shows it's been a very good process. Well, it has and we've got to remember that we're, we're asking the people what they think about this, it's been a long process. So at the moment we're just talking about the amendments and then we'll come back to the annual plan correct later. So, yeah, I'm not comfortable with number four. I think it's rather, quite frankly, a little bit disingenuous because we've had answers from staff today that things have changed in that programme and we're still waiting for confirmation for Waukatahi before we can begin construction anyway. The question would remain to me that if we had a surprise and we got that funding through earlier than we thought, then we might want to start it. So I really am not in favour of supporting that one today and nor the excess water charge and both of those have got a severe déjà vu all over again kind of feel about them, I'd really like them put to bed once and for all. So that's me today, thank you.
Thank you very much. James?
Very sensible.
James is fine. Victoria? Don't all go too quick because I haven't written mine yet.
Can I say, Pauline, you've sat the standard.
Excuse me, point of order. I said that I'll, I'll, I'll speak with my vote.
Victoria please.
Well, I do think it's incumbent on me to reference my own amendments and that is to not commence construction on wheels-to-wing cycleway on Heald Road for a period of up to 12 months. You heard staff say that there was some construction planned albeit not significant. The important thing is that this amendment defers, prevents construction contracts being signed. And essentially what the amendment does, it allows the local councillors to work with staff and the affected communities to try and get some better alignment on this project. Regardless of how much hard work and engagement the staff have done, and they have, that's not in dispute, we know that the project has not landed well with certain parts of the local community. And we all know that if we want to create some sustainable change for good in our communities, then we have to take the community on the journey and not force the change on them. I, I think that ultimately we should be having better cycle user stats by now giving the significant financial investment in the cycling infrastructure but the fact remains that we haven't at the moment. So we have to start doing some things differently and this is an example of this. You often hear the staff talk about expert opinions obtained to inform their projects. Well, I just want to raise the question, what about the locals' opinions? Because after all, our locals, our locals in our neighbourhoods are experts at living in their local neighbourhoods and I'd really like to see their opinions being given some equal way to not push down the hierarchy of opinions so to speak. So, so what this amendment does, it allows us to work with the community in a different way which is utilising the local councillors as an effective conduit. And the locals that I've heard from say that they have not had that opportunity to do that as an effective voice for them. So I'm asking you councillors to do, to support this, to support doing something differently to try and get better alignment which ultimately gets a better result for our community. And we all want increased public trust and confidence. So this allows some bespoke engagement with the affected community and I think it sends a really clear message, we are listening, please help us to get a better result for your community, please engage with us, we're giving you another opportunity to do that. Now, staff have said that the funding for construction for Waukatahi is not secure, it's new to all of us. This amendment actually helps them, I think, so that can't be ignored. And the staff on this occasion are supporting this amendment to work with the councillors and the affected community. So I thank Lynette and her team for working with me and councillor Keown to get this amendment on the table and for indicating their support for it today. So let's do this. In relation to the other amendments, there's just a couple, one was in relation to the excess water charges. I understand the reasoning for the charges and it's pleasing to see some really good results, some changing behaviours around the water use and the repair of the leaks. My initial concerns about equity have for the most part been allayed. I think the amendment really reflects the sentiments expressed by my local community and that is that the rate is too low and adversely and disproportionately affects large families. Coming from a family of known children, I know what the queue is like for the bathroom in the morning, I know about using a lot of water. So at this stage I'm minded to support the increase and it is a compromise and I accept that. The other one I want to touch on is the amendment by councillor Donovan and that's for the public realm improvements for New Brighton. Given the significant private investment in the public realm and the complementary nature of this works, it makes no sense to defer this. So I, I think that bringing forward the allocated funding allows the project to be completed in its entirety and this plays a really vital part in getting the community on the right path. The final one that I'll just quickly make a comment on is the annual uniform charge, councillor McClellan. The fact is that some things cost the same regardless of where you live in the city and it's a zero-sum game for the council. For every person that wants an increase or a decrease and for every person that wants a decrease in the UIC, there'll be a corresponding person who wants the increase. What resonated with me is that this is a significant departure from current policy and we already have one of the lowest metropolitan UICs. So those are things that impact on my decision-making and I'm letting, happy to let others who are more informed on some of the other amendments speak to those amendments to help inform my decision-making today. Thank you.
Thank you Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking councillor Johansson for putting up substitutions. Seems that he's done that more than some of the others around the table so I just wanted to acknowledge him for that. Just coming on a couple of things, the uniform annual general charge, to me, I think before we look at or even look at changing anything along those lines, we need to understand better who is going to be taking some heavy lifting economically. And I do believe it's the middle income earners, they've been hit with the increase of the value for their properties, they've been hit with inflation, increased prices and generally their wages haven't changed. If you are going to be a surgeon or a medical specialist and you, this isn't going to touch you at all, it's irrelevant what, what it is. But I believe we have to have far more information before we look at changing anything like this. It's certainly not going to affect the overseas owners who own multiple rental properties for Airbnb and others who have no realistic opinion on the cost of living in New Zealand. So I, I wouldn't want to touch that at the moment. With regards to the water, I would actually like to see it from 899 total charge from then, so 900 and over and obviously if there are issues then that can always be, whether they are medical or other, we can look at it from there. But I think, I prefer it to be a lot cleaner than, you know, seven to nine, we just, you know. So, but that's my, just my personal opinion. It's always really hard, we've worked hard and I want to especially thank Dawn and her staff because they're technically not our staff, they're Dawn's staff, for the work that they have done. Um, for the work that they have done, getting our rates down to, um, a manageable, I believe, and realistic level. Um, anything that we put up, however small, will in some way impact it. Um, if you run a business, it is watch the cents and the dollars of mind themselves and I think that we have to carry that around this table as well, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Kelly, thank you.
Yep, um, thanks, um, Mayor. So, um, most of these, um, amendments I'm, I'm actually not going to support. Uh, I just want to mention councillor McClellan's, uh, desire to assist lower associate economics with the change in the UAGC. Um, yeah, I, I admire that, um, I think however, as mentioned, the UAGC is a, is a blunt instrument. Uh, so I think we probably need a different vehicle, uh, to do that, so, um, I, while I like the sentiment, I won't be supporting it. Um, in terms of the wings to wheels, I feel that was decided by the last council. Um, it's not a, a cycle way I would have designed, uh, as someone who does an awful lot of cycling. Um, and again, watching the videos of some of the people cycling down Heald Road, those are people that I wouldn't cycle with. Because I thought, uh, some of those videos were just madness, um, cycling in the middle of the lane. Um, but anyway, I think that was decided by the last council and I'm, I'm happy for that to, uh, continue. Um, again, I would never have designed the cycle way that particular way, but what do I know? Um, as far as water charges are concerned, um, I feel like, again, we've set a path and changing that path would lead to confusion. Um, and I think, um, we need to, to stick with the changes we've made. Uh, I think they're sensible, they're not perfect, um, but with continual adjustment, they will get better and better. Um, the one that I will support, uh, in particular is, uh, as previous chair of the community board out in Waiti Coastal Waters, the, um. New Brighton, um, uh, I guess works, uh, public realm improvements. Um, we've seen New Brighton transform over the last few years and I definitely want to see that continue. Um, I'd love to see some substitution for that because at the end of the day, um, rates already at five point, what is it, five eight? Um, I wouldn't like to see rates go, uh, the increase go much beyond that, um, yeah, so that's where I sit on those.
Thank you, Jake.
I would, um, really encourage, uh, colleagues to embrace the opportunity to increase the equity of our rating system. And at the very least, support the conversation we should be having about the subject. That's why I'm proposing that we reduce the uniform annual general charge or the UAGC as it's more commonly referred. The UAGC is a flat component to our rate bill. A flat tax, of course, means everyone pays the same amount, no matter their means. Um, we actually have several flat taxes on the books, however, the UAGC is the largest. It should go without saying that any flat tax is regressive in nature and inherently unfair. In effect, the UAGC is basically a portion of your tax bill that would otherwise be assessed according to your capital value. And therefore means tested, capital value being the best means test we have available. Which is of course the worth of your home. Uh, so councillors need to ask themselves, is it fair that if you own a home worth six hundred thousand dollars, you would pay the same amount as someone with a home worth six million? I don't think anyone around this table would argue that was fair. So why is it acceptable for a portion of someone's rate bill to be treated unfairly? Compared to other cities, we have a low level of flat tax, but no matter the amount. Uh, but no matter that, no amount would be better. After all, a little of a bad thing is still a bad thing and a bad tax, uh, is, is, is very bad, fixed falling rate or not. At a time when the east of the city is facing a twelve percent rate hike, now is the time to have the conversation about our rate system. That is even more, so that we can implement a system that is even more based on capital value and less regressive. Now, thanks to the average increase in value in the east, they won't benefit as much, but they will still benefit the most. In fact, when I crunched the numbers a few years ago, I worked out that and staff agreed that eighty-two percent of households would be better off. Uh, with a completely capital value based system. This would be if we didn't change the business differential, that's an option we, we should look at at some point in the future. If you believe in progressive taxation, if you believe in means based tax system, then I would encourage colleagues to jump on the opportunity. To have this discussion with the public and ask the people of Christchurch. Do they want a system where everyone pays by means or a user pays system? Uh, where people pay regardless of the circumstance. You never know, Erin, some people out there might just say yes to paying, to everyone paying the same. Um, when it comes to Ferry Road, I would love to send the signal that we support this project because of course we do. Uh, but that would be a meaningless single, uh, signal. Um, because I, because we've heard that the transport programme is full, so bringing money forward wouldn't do anything. Anything other than set, a set, an undeliverable expectation. What good is that going to do? I can tell you, I can't, while I can't tell you what good it will do, I can tell you what harm it'll do. We've heard cutting funding for the stadium streets around would result in a delay because the work is already in progress. And well, if your real intention is to cut the project anyway, then I suppose that's good. But what we know is that that means, that, that would mean finishing these roads after the stadium opens. And that could push a whole bunch of extra traffic management costs onto this council. All in service of bringing forward a project that wouldn't actually happen any sooner in the real world. Worse than that, it would set the expectation that this work could progress any quicker and we've already heard that it won't.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake, Andre.
Yeah, so we've got, uh, eleven amendments in front of us and I guess there's something that concerns me is we've got eleven amendments which will, uh. Add expense, add to rates, but we haven't brought any amendments to the table, um, that offer any cuts or reductions to rates, is I guess my, my first concern here. Um, with this, my, my first time involved in this process, so certainly learning a lot from it, but that's my first concern. Uh, I am going to be happy to support some of these, I'll vote against others. Uh, I don't see too much harm in sending some of them to a public consultation. Where, I mean, you're limited for what you can chop and change with the annual plan. And ideally you want, because we have to go through this public consultation anyway, you, you do want to make it as meaningful as you can. So it will be useful to have some of these issues on the table to be, uh, debated, get public feedback on. Uh, and a, again, there's still the opportunity to, uh, yeah, remove things by the time we actually formally adopt the annual plan in a few months' time. So that's where I'm at with them, thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, I'll just try and quickly touch on three subjects and, uh, like, um, uh, Andre just mentioned. This is about what's going up for consultation, not what's been signed off per se, so let's hear from people. And oddly, uh, I am actually okay if people vote to hear from the public on the UAGC. Um, I obviously don't agree with Jake's position, um, I think it kind of reeks of elitism. And, uh, I, having grown up, um, in St John's Street, Wollston, um, as a young kid. And prior to that, when my mother and I lived in a boarding house in Sheldon Street, Wollston. Um, as I got older, uh, to about intermediate age and started to understand what taxing was and rates and so on and so forth. I was dumbstruck when I found out that my cousins that lived in Avonhead paid a different amount into the city's kitty for their ownership of the city. The kid growing up in Wollston didn't realise he had less skin in the game and he found it really, really offensive. Growing up, knowing that my cousins owned more of the city than I did because they put more money into the kitty to look after it. That's how it feels for people sometimes when we talk about the, the disparities between the rich and the poor. Some of them actually want to pay their fair share and are okay to do so. That aside, on the water, um, I, uh, my house now is in Heald, no longer Wollston, we have plenty of water there. In Heald, um, it was all peat out the back of us there, my house now is on gravel, it's where the Wimack Riverbed once went through. So this summer, haven't watered the lawn, it's dark brown, um, it scratches my son's feet because he likes to play cricket in, um. Uh, in, 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 in summer, uh, we'd go out in the backyard and play cricket, he plays in bare feet, I wear shoes because I'm a softie. Scratches his feet, not in a good way, um, because it is literally completely burnt off. My fruit trees, I haven't watered them this year, twenty-eight fruit trees I planted in my edible landscape. Most of them have had a really, really crap harvest and look quite terrible. That's the result of not watering, I thought I'll do an experiment for one summer. Um, luckily I'm in the privileged position to still be able to afford to buy fruit in, uh, but the trees themselves haven't done that well. And then I hear from other people, Yanni's Ward, which has a considerably high amount of sand, they have to overwater as well. So the excess watering charge, I think, is, um, punishing people in this city in a way that is not their fault. They chose to live or move to or were born into the garden city. And, uh, it should still remain the garden city and we should be picking up our end of the infrastructure so the pressure's not on the system. And when people come to me and complain, well, what about all of your leaks? We should fix those first before we start charging other people. Uh, so I just want to say on the, on the water charging, I will support going up to the nine hundred. Does it fix the problem? No, we're still going to get heaps of people complaining and I really hope they do during this annual plan process. Let us know, there's no point in telling us in shopping malls and pubs and weddings what, what they don't like about the council. They need to tell us during the annual plan or the long term plan. And then finally, on the wheels to wings, um, I seconded, uh, Victoria's motion on this or the amendment, sorry. I support it because all the way through this process, I've been about the outcome. The outcome for me is getting more people on bikes, not just building big cycleways. Not doing it to communities, trying to do it with communities and I believe the reason why cycling numbers have plateaued off. Is because we're not taking people on the journey enough. Cycling is fun and cool, it is not dangerous. Except in particular videos, when you ride in the middle of the road, it can get quite dangerous and you've got your fisheye lens on. But, uh, and if anyone out there does find it dangerous, more than happy to take people out for cycling lessons anytime, I'm sure Kelly would do the same. Uh, because I can show you again how it is fun and how it is cool and that offer goes to anyone at this table as well. It's a great city to cycle in, people should be out enjoying it, not being told to be scared of it. So support it because Victoria and I want to work with our communities to get an outcome where they will embrace a cycle way that will go through there. Not be seventy-five percent against.
Thank you, Erin, Yanni.
Thank you, um, I've, I've put forward a number of amendments, I'll just, um, quickly say that I strongly support consulting on the UAGC. Remember, that's just a consultation and I think it is an important conversation to have, particularly for people, um, in my area who's. Are facing, you know, massive rates increases of twelve to thirteen percent. Uh, well, there's other parts of the city that have none or actually have a decrease, so welc- welcome that. Um, I just wanted to focus on several of the amendments that I've put forward. The first is around the Ferry Road, um, active transport plan. Because it seems to me inherently unfair that when the community come and make submissions to our LTP and our annual plan. And are told that a project's on budget and is going to happen, that without any public consultation or engagement process. We defer that project and effectively kill it off for several years. The reality is that the active road project in Ferry Road to improve the pedestrian crossing safety around Olivia's and Matheson's Road. Was supposed to be consulted on right now as we sit here today. Um, I was told it would be taking place early in twenty twenty-three with construction forecast for early twenty twenty-four. I was told that the total funding that was available was six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So I can see no reason why that project is incapable of being delivered, given the designs have been done, it's ready for consultation. And there's been expectation in the community that it would happen. Um, if we can't deliver something as simple as some safe pedestrian crossings against a really busy road. In a community that has been waiting over ten years with the loss of the local school and the kids having to walk along. The dangerous ferry road and cross it to Te Waka Anua, then I think there's something inherently wrong with how we're doing things. And maybe we need to think about, have we just overcomplicated project, programme delivery to a point? Where things cost a huge amount of money and take a huge amount of time when we could be doing it in a much better and more efficient way. But fundamentally, it is inherently unfair for us today to effectively kill this project in the current financial year. For a draft annual plan budget for next year, which is what this decision, um, will do and that's why I've put the amendment forward to undo that. I also want to talk about the cycle ways because we heard, um, last week that people did not want us to defer the cycle ways. So I'm suggesting with a small reduction in the Te Kaha streets budgets. That we can keep money on to enable the design of the Apawaheheta River route and the Otaikaro Avon River route. Um, and I think it's inherently important that we do that because there's a whole bunch of other projects that are happening in synergy with those proposed cycle ways. And if we don't do the design work now, we run the risk of not getting the best, most efficient, um, design. So I urge my colleagues not to support deferring the MCRs as is being proposed in this draft annual plan to keep the money on budget. The reality is that for the craft funding, it isn't, again, inherently unfair that the craft funding was approved. Some of those projects were approved well before the Te Kaha streets projects were approved by this council. And yet, we haven't even started to consult on some of those. Some of those projects were to deal with safety around schools, like to Aratai and Limwood Ave, which have been rebuilt. So it's all very well saying that, wouldn't it be poor if we don't have a stadium and all the streets gold plated around it done in time? The reality is we've got schools in our local communities that have already been rebuilt, that have not had the safety improvements. For the kids and the children and the families that use those schools, I don't want to delay that anymore. Let's get on and get the craft projects delivered in accordance with what we said we would do with government. I cannot support us consistently delaying those and not being able to get them done. And I think it's a small price to pay that for a few of the streets such as Litchfield Street, which is in relatively good condition. That that should get an upgrade and be gold plated, while the streets outside our local schools, which are dangerous, should not be improved. So I urge you to support those amendments, I've put them forward with a small reduction, um, so that they can occur and I think that's entirely appropriate. Um, and I just finally wanted to just, um, say that, um, one of the really important things. That we should do around our water excess charges is to take people with us. Now, unfortunately, since the start of this conversation, we have had delay after delay with things like water meter readings, um, exemptions being agreed. And I was given assurance when we consulted on the LTP that people were able to understand what their water use was. And yet, even today, when I've looked online at the Water Reporter, there are some households that still don't have. Four readings to be able to see the trends with which they're using water. So I've had people contact me and Bromley at the Fair over the weekend who are really concerned, who want to do the right thing, want to save water. But they're saying work with us rather than penalise us first, so I support increasing the limit.
Thank you, Yanni, Celeste.
Um, I'm going to focus on the amendment that I've put forward, um. I just want to acknowledge, uh, all the work that's been done across the board by staff before I begin, I know this is, um, very complex. And it, um, I appreciate all the time they put into responding to all the amendments. Um, I just also want to note that, you know, we're a decade on from the earthquakes and, um, we can feel really proud of the progress we've made. Particularly in the city centre. I think one of the things that's really important to remember is that some of the best things that have come through the rebuild process is that. Working with community and the private sector with council support is where we see the, the best results. Um, a good example of this is the Sheira Idea, which was a conversation with the community about how they wanted their central city redeveloped. And we've seen that that's fed into the central city development plan. Now we have a similar opportunity to support a community led regeneration product, project in a part of the city that was badly impacted by these earthquakes. And this will also contribute to the wider regeneration of our city. This community led project is funded by two point five million dollars of a grant from this Canterbury earthquake appeal trust. Which will turn a thousand square metres of vacant land behind Marine Parade's pier side building into a village green. So this, uh, village green will become a community hub and as I've already said, this is going to be a space where people can meet. Um, there will be performances and it's also a community space for young people. And we've also got a, the, the community organisation also has a youth hub as part of the plans. So today's vote is about showing that council is enabling this work to happen. It's about keeping momentum towards the realisation of the rebuild of our city, including the New Brighton master plan. Bringing forward funding in the current annual plan is about aligning work between the private sector and the community. This is the most cost effective option because delaying this planning and consultation work will add further costs down the track. This work needs to happen now because it needs to align with other council projects which are currently underway in this area. So the timing is critical and delays risk holding back proj- uh, progress on these ancillary works. We've purchased land on, as part of the Oromav extension, um, the Westpac Trust builder, building is due for demolition, uh, this month. And this will create a north-south link through the commercial centre, so it's a key part of this regeneration effort. We also know that there's a significant amount of housing going in around the commercial core. Uh, work has commenced on the Sevieu development, which is. Uh work has commenced on the Sevieu development, which is one point six hectares, where site preparation works have been underway for some time and we've got seventy new townhouses going in there. Another street alongside the Mall, Berriffa Street, um which is just on the commercial fringe, has work underway. And we are expecting another two hundred residents across the wider commercial area. So in brief, this project is about collaboration between the community, the private sector and council. And I ask that you consider supporting this project through the annual plan process so we can complete the entire re-invention of the New Brighton Mall as one complete project. This is about supporting the private, the public and the community sector to deliver, um which is something that will benefit not only residents in the east but the our entire city.
Thank you, Celeste.
Very good. Thank you for the opportunity. Um I'd like to start by thanking Dawn and her staff for all the magnificent work they've done over the last few months to get this draft annual plan to the state where it is. Um it is truly appreciated by the community to to lessen that figure as best we can. Um I guess my primary reason for speaking this debate is to speak to the amendment that I've put in for the Awatea Springs Amy's intersection and why we should be supporting having that in our draft annual plan. As you've heard when I introduced this, this has been deferred from the pre-earthquake days. This intersection was deemed in need of signalisation and upgrade prior to the earthquakes. Since the earthquakes delayed it, we've accepted a heck of a lot of earthquake refugees into that southwest area. You think about the Wigram Airfield existed prequakes. That is now absolutely chock a with residents and houses. Awatea area, the Awatea Green and so forth down Awatea Road didn't exist. So there's been thousands upon thousands of extra um residents in that area, which are all trying to squeeze through those two intersections to get to where they wanna go, to do their shopping at the Hornby Hub. So trying to get through the South Hornby suburb has become an absolute nightmare. It's dangerous. You take your life in your hands when you're trying to get out of those intersections. And the congestion, when you're backed up the entire length of Amy's Road through Peak Hours, it's just unacceptable on the neighbours. The neighbourhoods there are having running happening through their residential streets simply to try and bypass the congestion that's happening. So this um pair of intersections, you hea- heard from um the staff that they are lowly ranked. But I beg to differ in the fact that, yes, their ranking might be low on the measures that are used, but the impact on the community has been enormous, continues to be enormous daily. And we're long overdue to get these um intersections upgraded to improve the flow and ability to get in and around that South Hornby through to Hallswall area in Wigram. So please support this and get this out for consultations. It's a mere hundred and seven thousand dollars to be brought forward that I'm asking to get the process underway um so that we can start to get the um wheels turning on getting this happening. Um other than that, the uniform annual charge, our community board asked for this to be, I think, even dropped um in its previous submissions in previous years. So I will be supporting that because we can need to do everything we can right now to get the some equity back into the rates increases. So that the those who are accepting the highest increases out of Bromley and likes can, you know, have less impact on them by having this simple little change. So due to my my board previously supporting and and I can see the sense in this, I'm happy to support that. Wheels to wings, I'm a big believer in get build it once and build it right. And any consultation with the community that the councillors can do, um we should be encouraging. And trying to get these little teething issues ironed out before the uh cycleway gets thrust through that community, I think let's get that right. So I will definitely support that. The excess water charging, I'm hearing from my community that, you know, the um system that we're we're using for the excess water charges is not very well liked out there. And I think by moving this upwards in the way to the nine hundred litre limit is a step in the right direction and um gets that little bit extra into this uh equity of that. So happy to support that. New Brighton, hey, that's a no brainer. When you've got the um, you know, private investment going into there and the other ground investment, then New Brighton's so long overdue for some tender loving care and it needs to be a point of pride in our city. Um and also happy to support the head-to-head amendment that councillor um Tyrone has put through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to add to debate, but councillor Kewan lit a fire under me, so I appreciate that, my mate. I uh, oh my gosh, I don't even know what to say. Um the term elitism, it's 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 a easily thrown around thing from the right to try and get the stop the left from pushing through for things like the U A G C. When we're talking about the U A G C, councillor Kewan was elaborating to when he was a child. And when he was a child in nineteen eighties, uh it has now risen to two hundred and sixty three percent. Um inflation has risen from two hundred and six- two hundred and sixty three percent, going from one dollar to three dollars and sixty three cents here today. So this is a completely different situation we're in. Our generation are completely different to the generation that have come before us. So when we're talking about things like this, we're talking about elitism around um around uh not being able to water our trees, our our veggie gardens, our fruit trees, when we know that there's poverty everywhere and children aren't unable to go to lunch to have good fruit. They actually buy sherbet. They buy just juice and Raro packets to have to have for lunch. They crunch up noodles. This is fact. And when we're talking about this around the table, everyone keeps saying, I think, I think. I'm I'm having a really hard time trying to process ifs, ands and buts and maybes when fact is fact. And we need to back things up with proper study, with proper knowledge and with experts that are sitting around us today. In regards to wheels to wings, I am in support of this on the basis of that it does not throw or defer anything. The staff told me that this does not defer anything. All it does is consults with the community and talks a bit more about it. I'm absolutely in favour of that and I'm okay with that. It is not a uh financial um of financial deficit to us, so I'm okay with that. In regards to the water rates, I have a family of four. We have around five showers a day. We do two loads of washing, a dishwasher. And at the same time, I've got two veggie gardens and water, all of my grizzlinias sitting around the hedge. So and I use six hundred and ninety litres. So putting that into perspective, it's a lot easier for me to be able to understand that seven hundred and thirty five is actually okay. I'm okay with this. Um we have a family of five, my my other family. They live up the road and they're using around the same, two kids, two parents and a cousin. So it's absolutely fine for me to go around the seven hundred and thirty five mark. In regards to the other ones around New Brighton, I'm in su- in full support of that. Um I'm all about the community and making sure that New Brighton comes up a little bit. I got there a little bit, took my daughter there, absolutely loved the place, but it is in dire need of work. So uh I appreciate everyone's recommendations around the table and will be happy to support most of these amendments today. And um yeah, Kilda.
Ira Waysera. Uh Kyorakoto. Um it's nice to see a much shorter list of amendments this year. Um and while we've got a longer debate, um I think the meeting overall will be shorter, which is which is actually um really good. We've worked through a lot of stuff as a council already. And this is a, you know, a tweak um ahead of the long term plan. When it comes to the water excess charges, it's really clear from the really good and thorough information that we've had today that people's fears have been unfounded. There are only a hundred and ninety four properties across the city on shared metres that could be eligible to be charged that won't be. Um and those properties will be getting metres, individual ones, over the next wee while, so they will be able to be charged next year. So the fears about it being completely unfair because of the shared metres have been unfounded. I'm looking forward to that information being more widely known um by the public because that will help people see um that that's the case. If we shift this up to nine hundred litres and seven hundred, we're going to shift the burden of rates from the four percent who use twenty three percent of our residential water supply onto all rate payers, and that is not fair. A change now would also be a logistical nightmare for staff trying to recoup current invoices when people might think that they might not be charged um and being chased up on that while people might be applying for refunds based on the fact that we're charging the limits. It would be a logistical nightmare um for staff and um quite a task, I think. When it comes to the general transport stuff, um I get councillor Johansson's um frustrations and we need to be able to scale up over time as a council to deliver on the projects that we want to see. But the focus constantly on the things that aren't getting done and the things that individuals would like to see brought forward really belies the fact of the enormous amount of work that we are doing in the transport space. We are currently, as we debate, building cycleways across the city. We have more cycleways approved for the next financial year, including a whole part of those local connections that communities have been after, and I'm looking forward to seeing those ones done. The noting provision that councillor Donovan's put forward talks about the Avon Otakara route, which is actually the direct one. It doesn't follow the river and it's gonna go down Pages Road, so that needs to be changed on the cycleways map, please. Um so that one, um making sure that we deliver that in line with the L T P may mean additional funding um in the following year to make sure that the planning is really ramped up. And I'd really like us to look at that. Uh I do agree with councillor McClellan that, you know, making promises for things um that we actually can't deliver is really unhelpful. It breaks trust of the council. And councillor Johansson is always the first one to point out when we've promised something and we don't deliver. When it comes to the wheels to wings, I find it an odd amendment from councillors Henstock and Kewan. But I'm pleased to see them switch from what they had been asking for, which is a redesign of the scheme um of the road, to working with the communities on the smaller details as part of the detailed design. Things like the access around driveways, those kind of things that are part of detailed design and a right to be working with the community to make sure we get those things right so that we're not inconveniencing people or doing things without the knowledge. However, I know that councillor Kewan's community will be disappointed at this enforced delay in construction, meaning that if the design was finalised and funding there from Waka Kotahi in place, we wouldn't be able to start work on the Hayward Brings Gardens intersection upgrade. Um I'd just like to let councillor Henstock know when it comes to the cycle user data that she's after. Um we have a lot of it. It's all open source data available online that you can check on our SmartView website at any stage. We've seen a steady increase, um including, um most importantly, from women. So we know that our major cycle routes have increased the number of women cycling um both to the city on those major cycle routes and through our city and our slow streets and our nice um shared paths around the river. We've gone to forty two percent, um up from under thirty percent um cycling in the city. In our suburbs and in the middle of the city, we're up to forty six percent. Um cycleways are gender equity, they're climate action, um and it's great to um see this one going ahead. And I won't be voting um for anything that has the potential of deferring work any further. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Tyler?
Got it. Um so the head-to-head walkways uh really got the potential to be the finest walk in this city. It's um if it isn't already, and it probably is.
Stop bickering, you lot. I'm talking.
So the communities around Fakaralpul Littleton Harbour are really, really supportive of it. They're enthusiastic about it and there are groups um of volunteers and and other groups who are absolutely willing to get in there and 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 um get stuff done on this one, eh? Like, it's it's a it's a it's it's a lot of it's been done, but I just think that we just need to keep the ante up on it, keep um keep the focus on it and I think change things a little bit differently and and um and I think that we can really um get ahead on that and show a commitment to that programme. So I'm obviously supporting that. I'll strongly support consulting on the U A G C. Let's listen to the people on that and get some good qualitative da- data and ideas rather than speculate um on it as we have been doing. Um on councillor Henstock's amendment number four, I've got actually no reason to not support this. I think um we need to approach it in good faith and I strongly believe that if we take the community along for the ride, as it were, we'll get a better outcome overall for the community um and the planet. I just wanna make it very, very clear that I'm absolutely committed to the wheels to wings cycleway. I'm committed to its um to it getting constructed as quickly as possible. Um I'm overall very, very happy with the design of it, um but I just think that a little bit of pragmatism doesn't go amiss um here. So I'm happy to um support um councillor Henstock's amendment there. Um for number five, I cannot in good conscience support the amendment for excess water charges, uh even though I would personally stand to gain from it. The process is working. We need more data before we start trying to second guess the outcomes. Uh cuz that would be like nailing jelly to a wall, in my view. Um shifting the goalposts like this does nobody any good and I believe the provisions in place are good. Staff have put a heap of work into it. Um and if you look, if you need to keep watering your lawn across the summer, just so you can look at how green it is, I think you should get out more and spend the money you'll save on supporting local businesses. And into the bargain, your lawn will end up looking like a fifth day wicket in Mumbai that will really test your defensive technique. There's a wee cricket gag in there for you. Um how is the cricket going, by the way? Um so I'm also supportive of councillor Donovan's um um proposed amendment and and councillor Peter's proposed amendment number eight. Got it.
Thank you. Melanie, please.
I give a cricket gag, but I haven't watched cricket since Richard Hadley was playing. Um and I wasn't in a debate because I I would suspect that everyone can probably guess who'd vote on every single amendment. But well, anyway, I thought, oh, here we go. Um so this year, um with the financial situation in the world, we are aiming to keep the rates increased as low as possible. We've done a really great job. Staff have worked exceedingly hard to achieve this. So I certainly won't support any changes to the excess water charges that will result in an increase in rates for everyone. An increase to the volume um before the excess water charges applied just works against the aim of the charge. And I will read again what went into the paper the other day. Charging for excess water, this is a news line if people wanna look it up on the internet, charging for excess water use will help us manage the water demand better and also reduce our pumping costs over summer. That benefits us all. Long term, we won't need to spend as much money expanding our water supply network and will also improve the sustainability of our city's water supply, which aligns with our climate change goals. Enough said. I'll support councillor McClellan um his amendment on the U A G C to reduce that. Um anything that council can do to ease the burden on lower income families, we should consider seriously and ask our residents for feedback about it. Let's remember, and councillor McCle- McClellan already said this earlier, but let's remember that the values of homes in areas such as Walston, Bexley, Ferrymead, Bromley, Aranui, Buon and Avondale have increased significantly. Uh they've resulted in an increase to their rates at around twelve percent. Now that's more than twice the average rates increase for the average household. In households, um it's more than five times the increase of households in places in the in the west, like Island, Pendleton and Burnside. Those are more affluent areas. And they're looking at rates increases under two percent. So that U A G C and to look at that and where where that fits is absolutely valid. So I'm really just looking forward to going to consultation. I really wanna see what people have to say. We are just going out to consultation now. We will make a proper decision once we've heard from everyone in the city and I hope to hear from lots.
Samuel?
Uh thank you. Just a couple of things. Firstly, I actually really enjoy these debates because I can see people's positions changing on different things as people talk and I find that particularly useful. Um I'm I'm more than happy to sele- uh support, and I don't say this very often, Yanni, Celeste and Tyrone and Mac on their amendments because I think this is the point of this stuff. We work, what's that? Yeah, 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 Tyler. Yeah, what I didn't say is even if Tyler did put one up, I wouldn't support it, but that's okay. The 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 reality is, the whole point of this is we agree overall on a picture. There are local issues in local communities where people think actually they deserve some more attention. Then as an elected council, we can set that direction. And I I kinda get where Sarah's coming from, a lo- you know, a lot of the time, actually, no, I don't, uh some of the time around around this stuff. Um but actually, we should never think for a moment that we can't be an imposition to the council staff if we want something done. So we shouldn't say it's too hard to do something. We should actually, if we want to do it, we're the elected people of Christchurch. We should make that a priority for them, but substitute things out along the way. Um the excess water charge, look, I I mean, the 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 world I live in, e- every time I go through the supermarket, I get someone stop me complaining about it. And I think actually, you know, why don't we go out and listen to them? If they come back over this period of time and say, actually, no, we don't want the limit to go up, we think it's more than happy, then actually, you know, we can listen to that. But I think the way it's been handled so far, uh you know, with the seven hundred, then the nine hundred and you get charged at nine hundred and one for back to seven hundred, you know, I just think we need to be a lot clearer with the community. So I think if we could go and actually um consult them and like I say, if they come back and don't want it, then So I think if we could go and actually consult them, and like I say, if they come back and don't want it, then that's point one on the, on the rates for, for that. Wheels to wings, I'm more than happy to support Victoria and Aaron on that. I think it's a really pragmatic, sensible approach and I, I think what I really liked about that was it isn't just saying we don't want something. What it's saying is actually, you know, both of you are committed to working with the council staff to find a good outcome for that community. And Erin, to your credit, that's all you've wanted, is actually a sensible solution that the people in that community want. What that looks like, we'll wait and see, but I think you two should be tasked with working through that over the, over the coming wee while. Just the only other thing is around the U A G C and, you know, I, I know Tyler mentioned, you know, there are experts at the end of the table that look at this stuff. The experts are actually saying they don't support the change, you know, and I, and I think we, we do need to be cognisant of that. You know, just in, in terms of how we consider it as a whole. But fundamentally, and I, I know people always do like to pick on the north west of Christchurch, but we shouldn't forget that just because the revaluations have changed this year, doesn't negate the fact that for many, many years, they have been paying substantially more than the rest of the city. You know, by nature, just because the goalposts change, doesn't mean we should screw the scrum, you know, because it is a one-off thing. I think what we should have done, and we'll probably debate it later on, is look further at how we can reduce expenditure within council to minimise that overall impact. And, and again, we voted that down in November of last year. So I'm not sure screwing the scrum now is actually the, the most pragmatic approach, but, you know, in the end, we'll, we'll see what people come back with. So I just do hope that people can look at that excess water charge. Let's just have that, you know, short, concise, you know, conversation with the public. There's a month where they can consult on it. You know, in the end, if they come back and say, let's not lift the limit, then, you know, it's, it's, it's dead as a duck, you know, it's, it's done, we, we move on. But I just think in a democracy, when people are feeding back, they're unhappy with it, we are, you know, derelict in our duties to not go and look at it again, and I think we can. So my preference would have been to remove it altogether. But actually, you know, talking to the, the council lawyers, they've said, no, that would be a, a long-term planned thing. I still do struggle to reconcile how you can materially change the U A G C, but you can't do something around excess water charge. But what we've come up with is, I think, a compromise, which hopefully lets us listen to the community. So I, I would really strongly encourage people to support that if they, if they want to listen to the community on an issue that doesn't seem to be going away and that, like I say, we get continual feedback on.
Thanks very much. It's me. Before I get started, I'd just like to say, I'd like, I'd like to congratulate all of you on the debate. Being very professional and so thank you very much. I, I think we've, we've, we've done a hell of a lot in a very short time today, so it's good. I'll start off with Hereward Road. In my view, I, I, I support what has been put forward. We haven't worked well with residents and we haven't worked well with some stakeholders, the residents, the bakery, especially the charity hospital, which is very dear to my heart. We could get it and they are definitely not happy. You, you've just got to go and talk to the two people that run it and they are not happy at all. So I'm looking forward to these two councillors, being able to work with them and get a result best for all concerned. Don't forget that this is just going out for consultation only, so just following along from what Sam said about the water. If, if people come back to us and say, eh, we're happy with this, get stuff, you know, that's what we'll do. So it's just getting it out for consultation. But I think water is working well and we're, we're, we're getting a lot of people fixing leaks. As I've said, well, I'm one of them, that's gone down from three thousand to about nine hundred. But the unintended consequences, some properties on the, on the east where it's sandy or I know large properties, large families can get a rebate, but when it's sandy and I think if you wander around town, the place is looking a lot drier because people I think are scared, as Aaron would have said with his backyard. People are scared to water their lawn because they think, oh, it's going to cost me a fortune. And we're gonna, we're gonna lose the garden city feel about it over a period of time as trees don't get watered for a long time. The only one, other one I'll talk about is Brighton. We have at long last a developer who is keen and ready to go. We, we need to assist them in their design with doing our bit alongside them doing their bit. Rather than they'll go ahead and then it'll be, oh, council hasn't done their bit, we've got to catch up. So, and it, it will save time and money if we work together with it. So I'm, I'm more than happy with just about all of the amendments. So let's get on to the next bit, which is voting on the amendments. I'll go through each amendment individually. Now, do we want division on all of them? I'd hopefully not, or what, what's, what's the easiest thing to do? Okay, so every time I bring one up, I'll say, do we want a division on number one, number two, whatever? And then we can all say and go from there. Is that okay? Righto. So, number one.
Number one. That's what we're suggesting.
Because it's a lot of work for Sam and her team to do that. So here we are. Amendment number one, you can see that on the screen from councillor Fields. So are we happy just to vote? Righto. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you very much. We're on a roll. Number two?
Division.
That's all right. There will be some that will be division.
Okay, that, that, that was the end of the roll.
So for amendment two, that is on the screen, deputy mayor Cotter. Councillor Barber. Councillor Coker. Councillor Donovan. Councillor Fields. Councillor Gough.
No.
Councillor Harrison Hunt. Councillor Hensstock.
No.
Councillor Johansson. Councillor Keown. Councillor McDonald.
No.
Councillor McLennan.
Ah, yes.
Councillor Moore.
Epstein.
Councillor Peters. Councillor Scandrit.
No.
Councillor Templeton. And the mayor?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, four. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, against and one abstention.
Thank you very much.
It's carried.
Okay, so we're up to number four. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Amendment, amendment four.
So for clarity, mayor, on amendment two, that is carried.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, amendment two is carried. Thank you. Amendment four. All those in favour? All those against? All right, we have to have division, sorry, Sam.
That's all right. That's what we're here for.
So for amendment four. Deputy Mayor Cotter. Councillor Barber. Councillor Coker. Councillor Donovan. Councillor Fields. Councillor Gough.
Yes.
Councillor Harrison Hunt. Councillor Hensstock.
Yes.
Councillor Johansson. Councillor Keown. Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor McLennan. Councillor Moore.
No.
Councillor Peters. Councillor Scandrit.
Yes.
Councillor Templeton. The mayor?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, four. One, two, three, four, five, six, against.
That is carried. Thank you very much. Right, rolling up to number five. Okay. So I just say.
No, I think, I think this will be a division.
So I cut out the middle man and just say carried. Righto. So amendment five, that's what's on the screen, so division away you go. Sam, please.
Deputy Mayor Cotter. Councillor Barber. Councillor Co. Councillor Donovan. Councillor Fields. Councillor Gough.
Yes.
Councillor Harrison Hunt. Councillor Hensstock.
Yes.
Councillor Johansson. Councillor Keown. Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor McLennan. Councillor Moore.
No.
Councillor Peters. Councillor Scandrit.
No.
Councillor Templeton. The mayor?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, four. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, against.
That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. It's not very often I get a win.
Okay, so we're up to number six. Right, I put amendment number six. You can all see it there on the screen. All those in favour? Those against? That's carried. No, you're abstaining. You're toast. Pauline pulling the This is what happens when you're
It's Tuesday.
So councillor Cotter is not abstaining. She is voting for
Your debates swayed you.
That is carried now.
So, so, so we're going back to six?
Yeah, six is carried.
Six, yeah, six is carried. Yeah, thank you. So now number seven, this is number seven, Pauline. This is number seven. This is councillor Donovan's one. All those in favour? Those against? Carried. Thank you very much. Number eight, Amy's Road, Awatea. All those in favour? Those against? That's carried.
Oh, I think you might need to just count that.
Count it?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to do division to keep everyone happy.
Oh, hands up, yeah.
Right. Hmm, okay.
Is this for number eight?
Number eight.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Cotter. Councillor Barber. Councillor Coker. Councillor Donovan. Councillor Fields. Councillor Gough.
Yes.
Councillor Harrison Hunt. Councillor Hensstock.
Yes.
Councillor Johansson. Councillor Keown. Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor McLennan. Councillor Moore.
Yes.
Councillor Peters. Councillor Scandrit. And councillor Templeton. And the mayor?
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, four. Three against and two abstentions.
That is carried. Thank you very much. So we're up to, we missed number nine.
So we're now doing amendment ten.
Ten, amendment ten, which is just rolling up there. This, this is Yanni's one. All in favour? All right. Against? Right, division on that one, I think.
So for amendment ten on screen, deputy mayor Cotter. No. Councillor Barber. Councillor Coker. Councillor Donovan. Councillor Fields. Councillor Gough.
Yes.
Councillor Harrison Hunt. Councillor Hensstock.
Yes.
Councillor Johansson. Councillor Keown. Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor McLennan. Councillor Moore.
No.
Councillor Peters. Councillor Scandrit. Councillor Templeton. The mayor?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, against and one abstention.
So that is
Lost.
Okay. So, and that's the end of it, isn't it?
And we've got, then we have to do, we have to do recommendation two now, don't we? Recommendation two.
No, we need to
Yes, let's break for the rates.
Okay, so Shall we do the forty-five minutes now?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that now.
Yeah, so Okay, guys, so we'll break for lunch.
Do you have a figure for us? Oh, we have the number already.
It's just like telethon, isn't it?
So, so the two members.
Right, 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 right.
I know, on between now and your lunch, but I just wanted to let you know. So, so as we talked about before, because some of the capital stuff that's gone through is not significant, it won't change the, you know, the point two thing. So the only thing that has changed it based on your decisions today is the excess water. So you are now going to be at five point six eight, so that's point one. Now, just to be clear, reading your amendments, so the consultation document will be changed to reflect that you have adopted the, uh, uh, the excess water change. And it will be noted in the consultation documents, but that will change the number. In regards to the U A G C, you're only consulting on, this is question, that you're only consulting on the options. So we are not changing any of the other numbers, not that it changes the rates impact, but it does change obviously our other numbers. Okay, so we are not intending to change anything. You're just putting a question in the consultation document in regards to the option to be considered. Is that correct? Yes, because that's what the wording says. So we're comfortable with that? Yeah. So on that basis, you can proceed, uh, when you choose to, to go to the five point six eight.
Forty-five minutes.
Two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Okay, thank you. So we will come back here at two o'clock to resume today's exciting proceedings.
Going a bit longer?
Two thirty?
Yeah, we've got the
You've got something to do? All right. Everyone happy with two thirty?
Oh, it's too long.
Too long? Righto, let's go in the middle of this. Two fifteen. See you here.
Thank you, Mark. Right, we have had our five-minute debate. We have voted on all the amendments. So we now, we know which ones are on recommendation two. So we now vote, because we'd already moved and seconded recommendation two. It's just got all the other stuff added to it now. So we now put, I'll now put the vote for recommendation two. All those in favour? Against? Thank you very much. That's carried. Okay, so now we are voting on the whole, ah, sorry, we're going to talk about the whole thing. Recommendation is on the secret sheet. Yeah, we will now adopt the remaining re-
So before you go, Ma, I think we're just going to get a final, final update from the CFO.
The latest one from Leah, thank you. Hot off the press.
Leah, I haven't got it through. No.
Whilst, whilst we're doing, whilst we're doing that, we, we will now adopt the remaining recommendation, which includes adopting the consultation document.
Is it arrived?
And Leah's got the latest, good.
Have you got something coming on the screen?
Yeah. Coming up any minute now. This is just to confirm. Are we there?
Here we go.
Yeah, we go.
There we go.
So we've just, excuse the formatting, this was done in three seconds by me. So this is now the impact of your decisions following the amendment. So the overall rates increase for existing ratepayers was fifty, five fifty eight, now it goes to five sixty eight. The impact on the average residential ratepayer was five sixty eight, now goes to five seventy nine. Average business model ratepayer was five seventy six and goes to five eighty three. And there is no change to the remote rural. And that is because excess water goes from, from the excess water rate to targeted water rate, which doesn't impact your remote rural. That means the average house, the household point of view will be an extra hundred and eighty three dollars a year, or five point seven nine, or three fifty two a week. And the average business is seventeen twenty eight a week, or five point eight three. And I haven't given you the table for remote rural. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you very much for doing that over at lunch break. Very good, very good indeed. Okay, so I will move this, which is in front of me, I just need a second, who is going to be Kelly? So, we don't need to talk about it anymore, but we can have our debate. Or our closing speeches, and, 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 or whatever you want to call it. Now, I know how much Pauline likes going first, so we'll start with Sam.
Cool, I don't need to be very long, other than to say, if you think about where we started with this, fourteen point six at the, at the beginning of this sort of process, it was quite alarming. But I just really wanted to just thank Dawn, Leah, Russell and the team, who have managed to pull this down. We had a really, well, Dawn, Leah and I had a really good conversation when they'd come back after the Christmas break. And we had quite a frank one around actually how we need to pull some more levers to bring this number down. And I guess that's sort of the point, if you, if you think back through how the election sort of-
Thank you, Mark. Right, we have had our five-minute debate, we have voted on all the amendments. So we now, we know which ones are on recommendation two. So we now vote, because we'd already moved and seconded recommendation two. It's just got all the other stuff added to it now. So we now put, I'll now put the vote for recommendation two. All those in favour? Against? Thank you very much. That's carried. Okay, so now, we are voting on the whole, ah, sorry, we're going to talk about the whole thing. Recommendation is on the secret sheet. Yeah, we will now adopt the remaining re-
Before you go, Ma, I think we're just going to get a final, final update from the CFO.
The latest one from Leah, thank you. Hot off the press.
We're just reconfirming.
Whilst we're doing, whilst we're doing that, we, we will now adopt the remaining recommendation, which includes adopting the consultation document.
Is it arrived?
And Leah's got the latest, good.
Have you got something coming on the screen?
Yeah. Coming up any minute now, this is just to confirm. Are we there?
Here we go.
Yeah, we go.
There we go.
So we've just, excuse the four meeting, this was done in three seconds by me. So this is now the impact of your decisions following the amendment. So the overall rates increase for existing ratepayers was fifty, five fifty-eight, now it goes to five sixty-eight. The impact on the average residential ratepayer was five sixty-eight, now goes to five seventy-nine. Average business model ratepayer was five seventy-six and goes to five eighty-three. And there is no change to the remote rural. And that is because excess water goes from, from the excess water rate to targeted water rate, which doesn't impact your remote rural. That means the average house, the household point of view, will be an extra hundred and eighty-three dollars a year, or five point seven nine, or three fifty-two a week. And the average business is seventeen twenty-eight a week, or five point eight three. And I haven't given you the table for remote rural. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you very much for doing that over at lunch break. Thank you, Leah. Very good, very good indeed. Okay, so I will move this, which is in front of me, I just need a second, who is going to be Kelly? So, we don't need to talk about it anymore, but we can have our debate. Or our closing speeches, and, 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 or whatever you want to call it. Now, I know how much Pauline likes going first, so we'll start with Sam.
Cool, I don't need to be very long, other than to say, if you think about where we started with this, fourteen point six at the, at the beginning of this sort of process, it was quite alarming. But I just really wanted to just thank Dawn, Leah, Russell and the team, who have managed to pull this down. We had a really, well, Dawn, Leah and I had a really good conversation when they'd come back after the Christmas break. And we had quite a frank one around actually how we need to pull some more levers to bring this number down. And I guess that's sort of the point, if you, if you think back through how the election sort of played out, and talking about rating and, and how we go about things. My view was always very much that actually people like Dawn and Leah are really competent in this space. And actually, we need to empower them to go and find the savings, pull the levers they can, and do it. So while we didn't look at levels of service or things like that, actually, we've been able to do enough to drag it down to not far off the LTP, you know, which is a bit of a start. But I think probably, you know, what, what we really need to hear from people over the next couple of months, or certainly from the tenth, March, thirtieth of April, is not only about what they do want, but what they don't want. So, you know, it's, it's really difficult if the, if the community don't tell us what stuff they want us to stop spending on, to actually make some changes. So, well, I just do want to acknowledge the team who have done a lot of work. But also to thank council colleagues who have worked in a really, I think, constructive way together over this process. You know, we, we started very much so at the point where we had two briefings, you know, as a collective. And then it was made very clear that actually we should do these in the public domain, to share sort of the problem with the, with the city. You know, interest rates, inflation and the like, and insurance are always going to be a problem. But we've managed to, to get it to a good point. So, you know, I think not only that, just acknowledge Peter Ryan and his team who have been able to pull this together as well. You know, they're sort of the, I guess, the plumber, so to speak, of all of it. But actually, we've got to a good point where there has been, what I hope is, hopefully minimal changes between now and when we strike the rate. But looking forward, the council really need to focus on that LTP to get that number down further. I think we can, but in the end, you know, this year's sort of one of those one-offs that, that you don't like. But we'll just have to see where inflation and that leads us going forward. So, you know, well done to the team, but I really hope the public come out and tell us not only what they want, but what they, what they don't want.
Thank you, Sam. Melanie, please.
Have your say.
Been it, done it, right. Okay, I'll just talk all, Sam's comments about how much staff have really just come to the party. They've just behaved incredibly well, been so helpful, constructive, the whole process. This is my first annual plan process and, and, so I don't know what any of them were like before. But from, from my point of view, it's been really constructive. I think, you know, we've all got different views on things. But it's, it's been really respectful, the way that the whole process has been carried out. I think we have been really keen to listen to staff, and Sam said it earlier, that he was, was actually changing his mind on things just as the, as debate progressed. Because we, we are genuinely keeping, keeping an open mind and just trying to come to constructive conclusions for the people of the city. And so that's really good, and that's something that I want to be a part of. And I'm really looking forward to echo Melanie's comments for the public to have your say. And I really want to just, just hear, hear what they have got to say and figure out how we can make the city even better. Cheers.
Thank you, Sarah.
Kia ora. As a council, it is not just our job to bring rates down. It's our job to future-proof the city for the next thirty, fifty and a hundred years. And that's what's the, the driver to only focus on rates and bringing rates down. Is what has led across the country to an enormous under-investment in our infrastructure over the last thirty to fifty years. We have seen this annual plan and last week, how difficult it is to choose between different but worthy projects in all of our communities and across the city. Climate change is here, and we have a lot of both mitigation and adaptation to do. And it's clear that if we don't reduce our emissions, the impacts will be beyond our ability to adapt. That is clear. While our emissions as a city and as a country are small in comparison to some of the major countries, the countries, the other ninety-nine countries, that make up the hundred smallest countries with their emissions, between them have thirty-three percent of global emissions. Everyone needs to do their fair share to reduce emissions if we are to reduce the impact of climate change and leave a livable planet for our children. We need to find a way as a council to increase what we do, rather than limiting what we do to drive rates down. We need to work out how we can deliver more of the projects that are going to be coming our way. We need more infrastructure to provide people with options to reduce their emissions. And as the adaptation plans start coming to council, we are going to need funding so that we can enable our communities to adapt to climate change over time as well. That doesn't happen simply by driving rates down. Yes, we need to spend our money wisely and efficiently. We need to be able to have the information to prioritise projects over time. And we need to look at our levels of service. But simply focusing on rates means that we will leave our city in a worse place and not a better one.
Thank you, Sarah.
Kia ora, I'm going to be pretty quick, and I don't want to take away from the manner that Sarah just gave in her speech, which was really good, and I second that. I just want to just give a shout out to Aaron and Sammy, I still love you guys. And, and being a first-time elected member in an annual plan, it's actually been a really enjoyable occasion for me. I've heard that the, the previous ones have gone a little bit differently. So it's really nice to know that we've got a council that works together, even though we sit on different ends of the spectrum sometimes in some decisions. So I really appreciate staff for all the work that they've done and providing me with all of the information I need to be able to make sound decisions. That's pretty much me in a nutshell, so thanks, thanks a lot to staff and love you, Sammy.
Thank you, Mark.
Kia ora. Great, great to see such good, you know, arroha and love around the table. Really pleased with where we've landed, although to say that we've, you know, got the, the rates level increased low enough, I don't think it'll ever be the case. But hey, we've done a pretty good job. And thank you to staff and, and my colleagues for all the work we've done together to get this where it is. And truly appreciate that. Just really hope that the community now, as we go out to them with this consultation, will jump in there and really do let us know, you know, if you'd like any fine tuning done or know what your priorities are. We as a council, we need to hear what you want and what you need. And it was good to see earlier, a win for my suburb with the inclusion of a long overdue project. And I'm sure there's lots of those long overdue projects all around town. So going through the long-term plan process later this year into next year is going to be fascinating to see, you know, what we come up with and decide there. But for this process we've just gone through, the annual plan, it's of course my first time here around the table. And it's been good to see the, the process at work and good to see the teamwork that we've all shown. Where, you know, issue by issue, we can sort of move our votes to where we need to, to support each other and support our communities. And that's the end of the day, you know, we all took the same oath and we're here to serve the people of Christchurch. And everything we do needs to be in that vein. So, well done, team, and let's hope we get some really good consultation and feedback with the have your say as the community let us know. Thank you.
Very good, Celeste.
I just want to tatako everything that's been said so far. I, I think it's been a pretty good discussion overall. And, you know, I think, I really want to sort of speak to councillor Timerton's point around, it is important to keep rates low. I understand that the burden is disproportionately falling on some of our poorer neighbourhoods. So I think, you know, that is important. But I also want to make sure, and I think possibly there has been some missed opportunities here, to make sure that we keep a climate and equity lens on some of the projects that we are prioritising. And so I'm looking forward to hearing from the community on their views, because we're handing this process over now, to the community to hear their feedback. And I'm looking forward to being guided by what they would like to see in this draft annual plan. So yeah, thanks everyone for their contributions.
Yanni.
Yeah, thank you. I too want to acknowledge the work that staff and the organisation have done to get us to this point. Obviously, it was very concerning when we were first briefed on this. I, I would hope that, and I think what we've seen by having some public workshops around the, the rates increases and what, and what the challenges are, that that actually is a much better approach to be fully open and transparent. And I guess my plea is that we do that from the start, not midway through the process after things have been leaked to the media. And, you know, I just can't see what the harm is by being open and transparent from the start, rather than just halfway through. So hopefully, we can, we can just kind of reflect on, on the benefit of being open and transparent. I think one of the concerns I do have in terms of the consultation document is that it's actually still very, very hard for the public to read and understand the changes that are being proposed, particularly around the capital programme. I mean, I've had a discussion with staff and I just make a plea, can we find a way to present the information in an easy to understand way? That doesn't mean you have to cross-reference three different schedules to understand what the actual change is going to be. I don't agree with everything that's in this document by any stretch of the imagination. The things I find disappointing are, we're deferring the major cycleways. We're still faced with a huge challenge in the east in terms of earthquake repairs to our basic infrastructure that is languishing at the expense of our continued gold plating of the central city around streets that are in really good condition, that are having nice glossy makeovers, when I've still got, you know, footpaths and gutters and curbs and channels that are full of stagnant water, attracting mosquitoes and not being able to drain. And every time it rains, it creates a nuisance for people. So I hope that we hear from the community around what their priorities are. I'm also realistic that although we, we have deferred the funding or rephased the funding for the organic spots to be relocated, I hope that we will give a greater priority to addressing it, particularly with the non-compliances that it's had over the recent few months. There's clearly an issue there that needs to be addressed a lot more urgently than what we're currently planning in terms of our rephasing. But I accept that staff have said, if we can do it sooner, we'll bring forward the budget to help. So, you know, I'm, I'm reassured by that. And the final point I just wanted to make is that, you know, the whole way in which we do revaluations, I think we need to spend a bit more time on. I think it's just really inherently unfair that the lowest socionomic areas of our city can face the biggest rate percent increases across the board with the way that the revaluations are done. And I think we should reflect on getting some better advice around that process. Because I've had a number of people in those areas raised concern with me, that the valuations are very much overinflated. And I think it's something that we need to consider. But I most importantly encourage people to have their say, and I look forward to hearing the feedback from our community.
Well, that was very good timing, Yanni. Aaron.
Yeah, well, where to start? There's been a few good points raised already. I think it is, given the position we were in, in last year, looking at the usual rate increase of double the rate or triple the rate of inflation. I'd just like to say that this is the first year in, I think, fifteen-odd, that we've actually come in with a rate increase below the rate of inflation, which I think is, is worth a wee applause. And a bit of a celebration. Yeah. Now, back to the serious stuff. We started this under the guise of a cost of living crisis. So I think we should have gone a lot further in, in our looking to reduce costs. And the capital programme, the fact that we're still going to aim to deliver one right on the edge of what we can deliver, I think doesn't really look seriously at the cost of living crisis, although crisis is, is a very common word these days, it gets used all the time. But are we really treating it as such? Because the government directed the banks to raise the interest rates again. I know it's at arm's length, but we know what arm's length means. And so the rate of inflation is at seven point two percent. And they've put up the interest rates half a dozen times now, and the rate of inflation is still at seven point two percent because it's got nothing to do with household spending on mortgages. It is all about governments and councils overspending at the moment in a hot market. And they're about to have to do a whole lot more in the North Island. So it would have been wise for all councils and government this year to have looked at their entire programme and pulled it back by at least probably thirty or forty percent to let the market breathe and come back and correct itself. So I'm just going to say, I hope people submit to this council on what not to spend money on, a lot more than the usual, what they do want people to spend money on. We hear that every year, so hopefully we'll hear about that. They'll reflect on what we are doing, what's in the proposed engagement document, and they will let us know how they feel. Not much in the past have they ever come in with their list of what not to spend it on, so now's the time to, to do that. So fingers crossed we'll get lots of those submissions. But I myself, I don't support the number that we've come in with at five, six, eight. Because we didn't ask staff to look, we, in this, when we had our wee meetings, our pre-metings, we opted not to ask staff to do that work. So we didn't give them a licence to really rein it in. So the seven point two percent inflation is the blame of council members all over this country and MPs who sit in Wellington. They're the biggest spender, so they are the biggest driver of that number. Let's not forget that, because we are them.
Andrew.
Thank you, Mr Beer. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's been enjoyable, it's been interesting. It's the first, first time member, this being my first experience doing an annual plan. And I, I found staff advice to be really useful. I think staff and Dawn have done an excellent job in getting us to where we are. Some rabbits have been pulled out of hats. It, it has been a concern that it doesn't feel like we've had all the options on the table in front of us. We did opt not to explore levels of service, which, yeah, so I, I don't feel like we have been able to consider everything that we could. However, that in mind, we're now going out for consultation and we want it to be as meaningful as possible. Yanni's point about it being really hard for the public to understand is a very important one. It is very hard for the public to understand how an annual plan works, how they can actually have a meaningful say. But that job is not just for staff to magic up in communications, it's also up to elected members to do that. It is up to elected members to go out to the communities, explain what it means and explain how they can have a meaningful say. It can be done, there is nothing stopping elected members from doing that. If you just go and share a link with people, there's a lot for people to take in. But if you go out and explain it to people, we can start to explain how people can have a meaningful say. And the point around what people don't want money to be spent on, yeah, it's an important point to make. If we're just talking about rates figures, we're talking about what we want. We are going to have to make, we're going to have some really, really tough conversations that we have to have over the next couple of years around what we are and are not spending on. So we've got to this level now. Getting to this level of five point six eight over the next couple of years is going to be seriously challenging. We will have to find savings and some substantial savings to be able to get to rates rises like these in years to come. So things like levels of service have really got to be on the table. We've got to have a really, really hard chat about them. And again, make those consultations as meaningful as possible. Talk about what raised rises are acceptable to people and tell them, well, this is how we get there. So we can make those consultations as meaningful as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake.
I'll speak briefly and just pass on my thanks to Dawn and her team as well. It's a tremendous amount of work that goes into our annual plan. And staff really do bend over backwards to answer any and all of our questions, even some of which I think need not be asked, in a really timely manner. So again, I want to thank staff, I want to commend the process, which, you know, win, lose or draw, I think we can all support that it's been a really robust process. We've worked collaboratively in briefings. And I'm really glad that this year people will get the opportunity to have a say on, on the uniform annual general charge, on, on the UAGC, on fixed charging, and actually let us know, let us know how they feel, we've got that mix. I'm really, I can't say I'm as looking, I'm looking as, I can't say I'm looking forward as much to the debate on water charging, but, but we'll, we'll deal with it when it comes. It's been really good to see some new councillors, you know, raise some issues that, that are important to them as well. You know, deliverability is an, an issue that we are really struggling with at the moment. And while some have chosen to accept that and, and some have not, I think actually that injection of government cash has allowed us to progress with some really meaningful projects, particularly in the climate change space, that we otherwise probably wouldn't have had the appetite to pursue. All that being said, I'm really looking forward to the LTP process next year. You know, it's, it's really the annual plan on steroids and we can really get into the, to the detail of levels of service and, and everything like that. And yeah, over and out.
Kelly, please.
Thank you, Phil. Yeah, I too want to commend staff on their patience with going through this process. Must be a bit frustrating for the times, kind of, but that's our, I guess our job is to suggest all sorts of different things and for them to patiently answer them. So thank you for that. I came in as a first-time councillor, hoping that we could freeze rate increases because that came up a lot in the conversations I had with people out when I was door knocking. And like Sam said, where we started, fourteen point six was, you know, outrageous and I was kind of horrified. The fact that we've managed to get it back to below the level of inflation is testament to a lot of hard work, mostly by staff. But I think that, that, that it's a really good result. It's actually, I guess, better than, than, than I would have hoped for. And I think it's been really interesting- And I think it's been a really interesting debate and discussion around the various aspects, what to include, what not to include and how to look at that. I changed my mind on a couple of issues. I came in with an open mind, which I find really interesting, don't do that often. And really, that was due to the quality of the debate. Why are you laughing over there?
Don't stop just a second there.
Thanks, Tim. I guess that, you know, the most important thing is to lay it all out before the public and let them to decide. At the end of the day, democracy is what we're all about and we need to hear from them and hear what their opinions are. And then that's all we can do. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. I've already thanked Dawn and her team. I don't think anyone outside here can really understand the work that's been done going from double figures down to where we have, it's outstanding work, so congratulations to you. Key here is it's a draft annual plan and I'm really looking forward to hearing from the public. But the most important part of that process is actually listening to our public and what their wants are, what they don't want. And we seem to be in a time where people have a short wick, angry, jump on the keyboard. And if you're a public servant, whether in local or central government, you seem to be a target, disrespected. And councillors at times too. That's part of our job, it shouldn't be, but you know, we are the ones that should stand up and stand on the parapet and take the hits for the team. But I do hope that when we hear the wants and what's not wanted, that it is done with empathy and respect of other communities. Because we have a number of communities that make up this wonderful city of Otatahi Christchurch. They all have different needs and wants, but they all should be respected. So I'm really listening, looking forward to what we hear back from our public in this and see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Kia ora, thank you. Likewise, I'd like to thank staff for the significant time and their effort and also their patience on this annual plan. As a first-time councillor on annual plan, it is, there's a lot to get your head around. Also, I want to thank my colleagues for addressing matters respectfully and I've enjoyed this collaborative approach to this year's annual plan. I'd also like to thank my colleagues for supporting my amendment, which really is a step in the right direction for the Papanoi and Herewood communities. And I think it also recognises the strong mandate that councillor Kewan and I have from our respective communities. There's no denying that our starting point pre-Christmas was 14.6% and that is unpalatable. And I recognise that it has been a combined effort and staff have used all manner of creative ways to get us to where we are today and to cut the cloth. I'm not entirely happy with all of the rephrasing in the Papanoi ward with some of the projects being pushed out. And I recognise that locals and the former councillor for Papanoi worked really hard to progress some of those matters. Just a reminder that those projects haven't been cancelled, the money's still allocated. The projects will still be completed just with a delayed start. I think today, essentially, we've argued around the margins, notwithstanding. I recognise that for many people, even this rate increase is still going to be impacting them negatively in many respects. And like a couple of my fellow councillors, it was my preference to explore other ways of reducing costs. I wanted to look for additional savings within service and we debated this prior to Christmas and the motion was lost. So I really can't sit here today with my hand on my heart and say that we left no stone unturned because that rock actually didn't get turned, we didn't get a chance to look under that. And even though it may have only been minor, I think that every little bit counts. Recognising these are challenging times, the world's changed considerably in recent years and there's significant external forces at play, so those are all factors beyond our control. So what we're left with today is undeniably a compromise. And like my fellow councillors, I'm encouraging the public, please, to have your say. Please engage with the process, if you think we've got it right, please tell us. If you think we're overspending or underspending on things that are really important to you, please tell us. That's my main message because we are listening and we genuinely want to work with the public of Christchurch to do better, to deliver better for the people of Christchurch. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. James.
Thank you, Phil. Look, the environment that we're in, you know, sees labour shortages, supply chain disruption, high interest rates, CPI that's above seven percent and building inflation, which is more than double that figure again. So when you're in the business of providing services to people and have an annual capital programme that's in the order of hundreds upon hundreds of millions of dollars, these factors hit us harder than most. It hits everyone hard, but we're really susceptible to that. So for me, you know, a draft annual plan that's lower than CPI is quite extraordinary. And you know, I don't think that anyone should lose sight of that. But so it should be, you know, because I think we do need to lead from the front. We need to do things differently, we need to cut expenditure and we need to keep that pressure on. That's what our community expects of us and I think we should expect that from ourselves. My view is though that the real work's going to take place in the long-term plan. An annual plan, please remember, is just the variations or the amendments to the long-term plan. So you can make tweaks here and there, but inherently you're limited in what you're going to be able to do through this process. That being said, you know, this is a good start point, given the environment that we're in. And I know it's been said by others, but it needs to be said again that I really do want to acknowledge Dawn, Leah, Lynne, Mary, Helen, Peter, all of the team here because they've worked vast hours to put us in a position to be able to have some intelligent conversations and make some hard decisions. Like I said, there's going to be harder decisions and gnarly issues to tackle next year in the long-term plan and that's, in my view, where the real rubber will hit the road. But to kind of reiterate, you know, what I started with here, that we were staring down the barrel of 14% rates rise with all things remaining equal, given the unexpected situation that we've found ourselves in along with the rest of our ratepayers. But it does hit us harder than most, given our size and scale. And collectively, we've managed to shave off almost nine percent to consult on an average rates rise of 5.68%. And that is with a consumer price index of 7.2%. So I commend all the work that's been done from my colleagues and from staff and look forward to hearing what our residents have to say. The only thing that I did want to add with, I've got thirty seconds left, is that, you know, I would draw attention to the likes of the UAGC because I think it's a bit of a cheap shot to think that making tweaks there is going to be the silver bullet. It most certainly isn't. I think that's a distraction for what those bigger issues are. Because the one thing I can tell you is that tweaking with the UAGC is not going to be the silver bullet to solving our underlying issues that we do need to solve collectively as a council. But thank you to all for the way that we've worked, thank you to staff for the process that we've gone through. And I really look forward to hearing from our residents now as we go out to consultation. Thanks.
Pauline.
Great. Hey, listen, a lot of it's been said, but the Q and A today has clearly explained to us how this annual plan is not all about money. Even if there is funding available for a project, there could well be, and in fact, it's quite likely that there would be a deliverability issue around availability of expert staff such as engineers and designers, et cetera. So I'm hoping that that will be explained very clearly in the consultation document. So that it's not just that I want, but it's more of a question of is this possible decision? So I think people need to be aware of that. About the excess water, as I said before, to me, it's deja vu all over again. When we've consulted twice and we've been given a clear steer of support. We've not even given this a chance to bed in. We know also that there's already a 10% savings, which allows work on our infrastructure. But we haven't given homeowners and occupiers a chance to adopt practices to conserve, such as even using mulch, et cetera. And improving our infrastructure is part of our journey to get the chlorine out. So I really hope people consider that when they give us their feedback. Regarding the capital endowment fund, I'm concerned about using a million dollars of the 1.3 million next year to save 0.16% of rates. It's a great idea, but it only leaves 547,000 for the 2324 for applications, when it should be over a million. So I've suggested a compromise option and I look forward to the response from ratepayers. If they're generally okay with using that from the capital endowment fund, well, then I'm okay with that too. Everyone has already thanked Dawn and staff, so I will follow suit and thank Dawn and the staff for the hours and hours. And also for everybody around this table, we've put in hours and hours of work too in discussions that have gone into this. We've been addressing the challenges of finding the balance between continuing to deliver services that the people of Christchurch expect while keeping debt and rates as low as possible. And I think that we've done this really competently. So it's now for the people of Christchurch to tell us if they agree with our compromises. And hopefully, they will use a citywide view as part of their response, think of what's best for Christchurch. We've landed on a 5.68% or if the capital endowment plan B is adopted, that'd be 5.76% increase. And we've seen a lot of work and compromises made. So I think that's an amazing outcome and I'd just like to finish by requoting from the famous wordsmith, Melanie Coker, "Have your say." I didn't mention fingers.
Oh, good. Thank you. Well, here we all are after a good day. Can I just start by thanking everyone for their work today? As I said earlier, it's been really professional and it's, to me, it's almost bordering on enjoyable, believe it or not. I really want to make a point of thanking Dawn, Lynne, Leah, sorry, and the rest of the ELT and the wider team who have worked on getting us to this point. And a special mention to Lynette, who always seems to get more than a fair share of amendments. And also a special thanks to Sam. Now, this is not Sam the man, this is Sam the far more attractive one. And the secretariat team for helping us through today and especially for helping me, and that's a hard job in itself. From my perspective, your guidance has been invaluable. You have all put in tireless hours over many months to achieve the result we have. It has not been easily. To new councillors, if you think this annual plan process was a lot of work, you haven't lived. Prepare yourselves for the long-term plan and as Jake said, it's the annual plan on steroids. Looking at our draft annual plan, I'm especially happy to see the inclusion of the roving maintenance crews as in this proposal. It's something that I strongly believe in and I'm convinced it will help us get a better result for the community. I'm also happy to see our rates rise remaining below the rate of inflation, when few other councils have managed to do that. I'm also happy to see the approach shown by staff in the vacancy strategy used to further keep the costs on households down. Also, I'm happy to see the amendments passed today, especially the changes in New Brighton Mall, consulting on excess water charges and supporting local councillors to work with the community on the wheels-to-wing cycleway. Now it's up for the people to speak, so today I'm fully of support of sending out our draft plan for our community to have their say. And I really encourage them to put their views in because we need them to give us a steer. Can I thank you everyone once again for their work today? I look forward to hearing from people over the next few months. Thank you very much. And with that, I will move recommendations three to six, which are on the screen above my head. All those in favour?
I need a second.
And Erin was the second, makes sense.
No, I just had a question, where's the rates number in what we're moving? Normally, I thought we could normally see it.
Four, five, point.
Doesn't it go in here now?
It's in there. Okay, sorry, who seconded it? Yeah, Erin did, yeah, okay. So I said, everyone said, anyone against? This is absolutely marvelous data. So that is carried. Yes? We can only go one pro from here.
Don't say that, please.
We will now reinstate standing orders. I will move it and Pauline will second it. All those in favour? Against? Thank you. And we have the Karakia. I'd like to close the meeting, thanks very much.